Okay, we are calling this meeting back to order. And first, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So Superintendent, I'll stand for the pledge.
Ready? Salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And with that, we're moving on to item 4.2, the broadcast statement. What member Zhang?
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, June 26 at 6:00 p.m. and Monday, June 27 at noon. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you so much, Board Member Zhang. And now we're moving on to announcement of action in closed session. Any announcements?
Good evening, Vice President Garcia. There are five announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of six to zero with Member Pritchett absent. Second, the board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2022050024 by a vote of six-zero with Member Pritchett absent. The superintendent will provide the rest of the announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I am very pleased this evening to announce that the board approved the following appointments in closed session by a vote of six to zero with Board Member Pritchett absent. The board approved the appointment of Ms. Autumn Muwa as principal of Camelia Basic Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Muwa. Next, by a vote of six to zero with Board Member Pritchett absent, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Jennifer Molino as principal of Peter Burnett Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Molino. And last, by a vote of six to zero with Board Member Pritchett absent, the board approved the appointment of Mr. Doyle Martin as principal of Phoebe Hurst Elementary School. Congratulations, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much and congratulations to all of the newly appointed. So with that, we're going to move on to item 6.0. This is for agenda adoption and prior to that, we want to make a quick change. We need to change the order of item 10.3 relating to the LCAP to come before items 10.1, 10.2, and 10.4 related to budget and other issues. So with that modification, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Board Member Wu? Second by Board Member Villa. All those in favor? All right, okay. Any abstentions? Any no's? Okay, thank you. So now we're moving on to item 7.0, public comment. Mr. Heep?
Member Garcia, we have nine speakers signed up to speak on item seven.
Okay.
We begin with Yumiko Termyham, who's given her time to David Alamon and then also David Alamon, so four total minutes. And then also, next speaker is Jatavia Cruz-Brown, followed by Yolanda Perea.
Excellent. So if the other two speakers can get in the queue and let the clock reflect four minutes, and we're asking you to please. Okay, so it's a total of six minutes. Okay, so, and we ask that you please stay within your six minutes so that we can continue to hear from other speakers. Did you press the mic? The button by the mic?
Hello? There it is. So, let me ask Ms. Zhang. I'm going to tell you a little story, okay? Let me use a bus as an example. There was a bus that drove around our district picking up low-income, disadvantaged, high-risk, zero-five children. And they picked them up from these areas, okay? Talking about Oak Park, Franklin, Florin Road, Elder Creek, Seabee Circle, Parkway, Detroit Boulevard, Meadowview, Sepata Park, MLK, 50th Avenue, 29th Street, Fruit Ridge, Stockton Boulevard, MLK, you know, some of the most disadvantaged areas in town. This bus went by and picked up children. In 2018, 19, this board said the district was going into state takeover if they couldn't establish a budget. They laid off over 100 teachers and staff and were going to cut school programs. However, in May of 2019, they found $30 million in their budget and they rescinded everything except this bus. This board allowed half of this bus to be cut. This bus only picks up now 1,100, roughly 1,100 children, okay? It's cut in half. The board literally said no to 1,000 preschool, low-income, disadvantaged children, okay? The board said that to them. Gave up their responsibility. Last month, we learned in a great presentation that TK is going to save preschool. This is preschool for all. This bus now has new areas to pick up and new children to pick up. Children who have families with more income and better lifestyles. These are areas of town that are pretty well, okay? How do I know this? Because some of these board members at that meeting said, wow, if I had a preschool like this, I would have put my children in there. These children will push out children who need an equitable system, a level playing field, and opportunities to grow and reach their greatness. Ms. Zhang, would you mind reading that?
SUSD core value. We recognize that our system is inequitable by design and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness.
Every child that will be enrolled in this new system, this magical TK that they're going to prepare kids for, that our great governor thinks is great, will push out low-income and disadvantaged children in this district, okay? And just like this, where do they go? The other kids get in and our kids get pushed out, okay? Ms. Zhang, do you see this bus equitable or inequitable by design? Okay, Mr. Rhodes, do you see this bus equitable or inequitable?
Sir...
It's not appropriate?
Yes, can you please...
Because you don't want to deal with it. Okay, so let me ask you this. According to the core value, who should vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities? Who? Is this equitable or is this equitable? Superintendent, maybe you want to take an answer at it. What's more equitable? Huh? Just the numbers alone. Phillips?
Yeah.
I'm going to answer that. It's inequitable and it's something that we need to work on, obviously. It's unfortunate that we have a new program coming in and children are going to get pushed out. When I saw the names, I'm like, that could be an issue if we're losing students to transitional kindergarten who are not...
Look at your enrollment, okay? And which one levels the playing ground?
Please wrap it up. Please wrap it up.
Mr. Superintendent, which one levels the playing ground? Huh? This bus or this bus that you created? Which one?
Please wrap it up. You're out of time.
This is embarrassing. It's a shame. And now you're coming in with this new great thing, "for all," and that means people are not being checked for income. And that pushes out numbers. You already got low numbers and pushing them out.
Please wrap it up. Please wrap it up. The district is implementing a state program.
Look at your district's core values.
Thank you.
By design.
Thank you.
Don't come back to another way and say something.
Thank you for your comments.
It's wrong. And you know what?
Sir, please wrap it up.
Quit saying that you were part of the Chiapasino leadership.
Sir.
I used to help with that.
You're out of time.
Is it about Serna?
You are out of time.
Gracias.
Next speaker, ma'am.
Por favor. Ya se le terminó el tiempo.
I wish you could talk to some of those guys.
Next speaker, Jade Jatavia Cruz-Brown, followed by Sid Jagmori, Rich Vasquez, and William McCarty.
Thank you. And to all the subsequent speakers, please address the full board. Board members, please, let's follow the rules. We cannot engage with public testimony on items that are not on the agenda for a reason. So we can engage outside of that, but not during public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So if we can all just follow the rules and the decorum, that would be very much appreciated. And with that, we'll go ahead and give you two minutes and looking forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jatavia Cruz-Brown. I am a current student at West Campus High School. This is my first year on campus and a lot of things have gone on that have not had proper handling. So our vice principal recently, she was sexually and racially harassed on campus and like a lot of things were blown out of proportion to where the N-word was written about five times right over her parking spot. There have been teachers saying slurs in classrooms. And when all of this has been reported, nothing has been done. So essentially, I want to address that and I want to bring awareness to it because it is unfair that minority students on campus have to go to school every single day and essentially be scared. I'm scared to be on campus, like, in fear that I'm going to get harassed for something that was out of my control. I have tried talking to my principal and he formed a sort of unity council, but after the first meeting, nothing, he did not go forward with it. I'm the one who initially, I set up all the meetings. I have gotten students from all around campus of all minority groups, including the LGBTQ community, just to address the discrimination on campus. I have had underclassmen come to me, like, crying because of nothing being done about the harassment that they have faced on campus. We have set out demands as current secretary of the Black Student Union, we have set out demands to the principal, we've tried to set up meetings with him, nothing has happened. I just really want awareness to the situation. I want something to be done because we are hiring a new vice principal tomorrow, we're having interviews. And essentially, I want to break the cycle. I want students on campus to feel safe, and that includes all students. West Campus is called diverse. We may be called diverse, but we're not accepting. No student at West Campus is fully safe unless you're straight, white, that's it.
Thank you so much for your comments. Very much appreciate it. Just make sure that your time is reflected. Two minutes, please. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I have a few comments to make now. I wanted to talk a little bit about, and thank you, Member Garcia, last meeting, for bringing up the idea of adding to the budget funding to support mental health resources in every school. And right after you brought that up, Board President Pritchett mentioned in her comments that we'd had difficulty with filling open positions for some time, which is totally valid. But that, to my mind, in a leadership position, is the beginning of a conversation. It is not a conversation ender. We're looking to your leadership to get creative because we know throughout the year that our staffing crisis has been endemic. It's been systemic. It's something that we're looking at you guys to disrupt. Speaking of which, Member Phillips, I appreciate and applaud you for disrupting this system of stonewalling because, quite frankly, these rules of not participating and not engaging with all of us only support the powers that be. You need to get much more comfortable with being uncomfortable, every single one of you. We're reaching out to you. And I've watched people over the last three or four years reaching out to you desperately for connection, for understanding, for something more. And we're not getting it. And Member Phillips is the only person who seems to do that. I can't imagine none of the rest of you are. But these rules are status quo and we need more from every single one of you. Please fix our staffing pipeline, get curious, and then join us in getting furious.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Mr. Vasquez. Can you please put two minutes up there? And thank you so much. Go ahead.
Good evening. Just wanted to come and get out of the house and, you know, it's tough getting here, like, no one comes. This is exhausting. Usually I get up online, I've been gone the last couple online at home and, you know, it is funny, you hear some of the stuff they talk about. I think you guys need some humble pie. There is, you know, we're sitting at home and there's all good job, good job, everything. All you're hearing is good job. You know you're a failing district. You know, most of your schools aren't thriving, like, the students are failing. Those are the realities. So again, like, we come up here and you know, it is, everyone's doing a good job, we're trying to work, okay, improvement. But quit patting yourself on the back because there's failing. The kids are failing. I mean, that's the data, right? You're data-driven and we're failing. So again, under your leadership, five years going on, let's start moving forward again. My personal experience, what can I expect my final year? I have a, my kid averages a teacher vacancy every year. We just had him for the CTE program, HMS, medical or something. What if that was a route she could have took to get herself out of property, push us out somewhere, get better opportunities in life? And, you know, they had a cool little relationship with that teacher and then she was gone. So again, I don't understand what's going on behind the scenes or whatever. So, I mean, that doesn't make sense when these CTE programs are supposed to push these kids and give them experience to improve their lives. Again, okay, teacher vacancy, I've been asking about this since 2019, since we came on campus, right, three, four years. Are we doing anything? What is the district doing? Is it a joke? This is the SIPS of goals. I've been to every school site council. Our SIPS of goals are based on teachers. We don't have teachers. How are you going to implement what you're saying you're going to do? MTSS, it's based on teachers. So this is just all talk, 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 right? I'm at the LCAP meetings, I've been on the LCAP, I've been through all these meetings. It's all talk. I'm not seeing it implemented at the school site. Again, MTSS, again, Hiram Johnson's a high priority school site. For how long? It was a priority school site before I got there. It's, I got one year left, that's four years. It's there the whole time I was there and it's going to be after, right? So what does priority mean to you guys? It's a joke, huh? I just lived my whole life through it. Again, why does this all matter? Again, I went to your school sites, no sports, no arts, no programs, no nothing. Okay, I thought that was hard. Split classes, we had nothing. It sucked, right? I came back a couple board meetings, your district sucks. It does. That's what I lived. I'm sorry. I'm a parent that went to all the meetings. I didn't miss PTSA, I didn't miss the school site councils at the elementary site. Do better. I mean, come on. Get better. Do better. And again, I ask all this stuff, you guys, the trustees that feed into Hiram Johnson, the only sole school site in the area, will you send your kid there? Will you send your kid there? You guys go on a selective school sites. You can't, you're not living, but we're living, so you can't relate to us, okay?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Generational poverty, that's what you're talking about. How much have you improved Hiram Johnson? That's what you were talking about in your campaign. It's all talk, huh?
Thank you for your comments.
How many counters have you added? That was in your campaign. How many counters have you added?
Mr. Vasquez, your time's up. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, William McCarty, who's given his time. One minute each to Ed Fidor and Stephen Painter.
Okay, Mr. McCarty. Okay, and that'll be a total of six minutes.
Three for me, three for Colonel Painter. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Fidor.
Okay, so we usually, it's two minutes per speaker and so you're all splitting. Three people are splitting.
Chief McCarty has given me one minute of his time and one minute to Colonel Painter.
Got it. Okay, it's a first. We can go ahead and do that as long as we stay within the six minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So three minutes. Please go ahead.
This has become a regular thing. Last year, the last month, the ROTC instructors were here discussing the PE issue that we had, and I'm just wondering if there's an update because we've not heard word one from anybody. So we're just, I'll start with that. The reason we're here tonight, though, is because when I joined this school district 12 years ago, we were part of the teachers' union. The year that followed, we left the teachers' union, we sued the teachers' union and the district, and we won under fair practice, union fair practice labor law. At that point, we met with Consey and a few other people and the agreement was that our pay scale would be based on the teachers' pay scale. And for six years, it was. In 2017, somehow, things changed. We were on a 223-day contract and when the new pay scale came out, they bumped us to 239 days without us knowing it. And to do that, they had to lower our daily rate. When we queried into that, we got no response from anybody. Two years ago, in March of 2020, we met with the director of employee relations and Mr. Hadnot had all the emails and agendas and minutes from all the meetings that we had with Consey. And he said, you guys are absolutely right, we'll take care of this. I just have to run it by the district lawyer. That was 27 months ago. Again, we have not heard word. Well, in September, I sent an email saying, what's the status? He said, there's other things going on in this district that are more pressing and higher priorities, so no change, we'll let you know. We've not heard another word. He does not answer my emails, I'll leave voicemails on his phone, he doesn't do that. And I'm the one to take the lead because I've been here longer than any other JROTC instructors, it's 12 years. So we just kind of want to meet, but not just meet again because 27 months ago, we met and nothing happened. Now, I applaud what's going on tonight in the meeting, Agenda 10.4, where non-represented people like ourselves, if you pass it, will be getting the 4%, 3%, 3%. But we're talking about years prior to that that have never been addressed, which affects where we are. The pay scale that they made, new one for JROTC, they changed it from 20 years that teacher has as a max to 26 years for us. They changed the amounts, but the biggest thing is they changed our contract from 223 to 239, all while us knowing anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, at three minutes, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar and board members. My name is Colonel Stephen Painter. I'm one of two instructors at Hiram Johnson High School, one of the eight that are total in the district. Later this evening, you will discuss a proposal to apply compensation terms for all non-represented employees, including ROTC, similar to those applied to represented employees. And for that, we are very, very appreciative. Thank you for your consideration in that matter. However, I am here this evening to try and capitalize on that momentum gained for tonight's proposal and highlight the fact that ROTC instructors have been unsuccessful in garnering a pay increase from the last represented employee pay increase in 2019. ROTC and HR had a meeting on 16 March 2020. If you know that date, it's only a few days after COVID hit, right? Some two years ago plus regarding this issue. And the meeting notes from that meeting are right here. During that meeting with HR, each ROTC instructor was provided with a monetary figure of what they should have been compensated for when our salary schedule was adjusted. The figure was inaccurate due to not compensating for all the percentage increases and HR stated they would get back to us. In addition to not receiving a pay scale increase in 2019, there were other issues discussed, one of which was our contract was lengthened by 16 days in 2017. That's five years ago, without any negotiations or prior knowledge. Without a subsequent pay increase, this affected our daily rate by reducing it. To this day, we have never received any memo, feedback, correspondence as to why our contract was extended without any coordination. It's hard to fathom any organization that would manipulate an employee's contract without any discussion or negotiations. Can you imagine your employer doing the same to you? I was hopeful that it was just an oversight. However, there hasn't been any feedback or cross-talk from HR, even though we have made numerous attempts through phone calls and emails with little or no response. We understand that the pandemic threw our district and country in an unprecedented time of placing the safety of our students and families first. The issue of eight ROTC instructors out of 1,750 teachers, but the issue of eight ROTC instructors' pay from 2019 would have been placed way on the back burner. Well, over two years have lapsed since our initial discussions with HR and it is now time to reopen those discussions on ROTC pay disparities. Again, we're very appreciative of the proposal tonight to equally compensate the non-represented employees as well. We trust that the board sees fit for ROTC to receive tonight's proposal in addition to the salary increase we should have received in 2019. Any help would be greatly appreciated and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have no more speakers?
That's all.
Okay, thank you very much to everyone who spoke on items not on the agenda. Now we're going to move into our special presentations with the first one being 8.1, the recognition of our outgoing student board member, Jacqueline Zhang. So with that, just wanted to take a moment and just thank our student board member for spending a year with us and giving us the privilege in having her voice on this board. This is something that a student board member is not something that is common. It is not something that is in all school board districts, but here in Sacramento, we do have the privilege of having a student voice. She is a student board member as a junior from Kennedy High School. This is also something that she, I think, is breaking some historical, establishing some history here because as a junior, she's a student board member. She is quiet, but definitely strong. So I just wanted to make sure that we've recognized her unwavering voice on behalf of the students in Sac City Unified. I've had the privilege of working with her on a couple of issues and I have found that work very insightful and very necessary, so I look forward to later updates. And I just want to thank you... so I look forward to later updates, and I just wanna thank you, um, um, for spending the year with us. I hope that, um, that you learned as much from us as we learned from you. And, um, with that, I'd like to open it up to comments from other board members, um, before we, we go ahead and, um, present you with a gift. So, um, with that, Board Member Rhodes.
I just wanna, I just wanna say that, um, we're lucky to have you as a junior, and that you're gonna still be here, and hopefully you're still active with, uh, the SAC, um, so that your voice is not, uh, maybe not represented here on the board, but definitely represented with your peers, and continue to push for the things that, uh, you see that your, your, um, colleagues in school are going through and being an advocating voice. Uh, don't change that, um, and know that you, you are always here with us and the board, and so we thank you for spending your time, and we look forward to your continued work, uh, in the district and further beyond.
Thank you, Board Member Rhodes. Um, any other, um, comments?
Oh, I hit the wrong button.
Board Member Murawski, and then Board Member Phillips, and then Board Member Villa.
Thank you, Board Member Zhang, it's been such an honor and pleasure to have worked with you. Thank you for always bringing the voice of the students to us, um, and keeping it real, and reminding us, you know, every, every board meeting, why we're here, who we're here to serve, and I just wish you the best, um, you know, as you move forward, and just so happy to have gotten to know you this year.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Phillips.
Thank you, Board Member Zhang, for voicing your opinion when it was warranted and when it was unwarranted. I think that from the mouths of babes is where we hear a lot of information, and we gather a lot of, um, I guess a lot of our strength as adults. I really have enjoyed working with you. Um, I, I catch a corner of your eye every once in a while, and I, I truly appreciate her willingness to step up and participate in this. Maybe someday we'll get our student board members a vote, but I appreciate your service, and thank you so much.
Uh, thank, thank you, Board Member Phillips, Board Member Villa.
Um, I too appreciate, I mean, if I was a junior in high school sitting on this, this, that's a very challenging role, but you filled it, and I too appreciate your very direct and open criticism and comments, um, not only from the students' perspective, but just as a district as a whole. Sometimes, when you say things, I didn't even think about it that way, and it's really important to have that vote, have that, have that vote, excuse me, have that seat, just so you can speak on behalf of so many people who aren't here to do that, so I really appreciate that.
Uh, thank, uh, thank you, Board Member Villa, um, Board Member Wu.
Jackie, I'm gonna call you Jackie. You know, it, it has been a real pleasure, I really wanna thank you for being here. Okay, always, if you can, speak softly, but carry a big stick, that's all I can say, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Board Member Wu, so, um, with that, Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you very much, Vice President Garcia, uh, Member Zhang, um, uh, I wanna just express my appreciation on behalf of our district, um, for no board member, including the student board member, which essentially, uh, is tasked with the same responsibilities. Uh, she is here well into the night until very, very late hours, uh, has to do all of the same amount of studying of the issues and engagement in those issues, and so there is not a lot of distinction between the role of a student board member and a board member, thanks to the commitment from this board, uh, to have her sitting on the dais right next to the board president, so your voice should carry a lot of weight in this position. Um, I'm just hopeful that we will continue to have the, the type of quality student board members that, uh, uh, Student Board Member Zhang, uh, has reflected, and I'm just really proud that we have students like you, um, who are willing to step up and put in just countless amounts of hours and time and energy, uh, into this work. Uh, your voice is very, very critical for, for our board and for our district as well, so best of luck in your future endeavors, we will still have you for another year, uh, and we're looking forward to what you're going to accomplish as a senior in our school system, thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent, um, would you like to make a few words? But we also wanna go down there and take a photo with you.
Um, it's hard to believe that this is, uh, this has been the year, and this is the last board meeting that I will be here as a member of the board. Um, I'm very honored to have served as a, the student board member. This position is incredibly unique, and you don't get this kind of hands-on experience in, uh, your schools and on campus. Um, I spent long nights in this room trying to understand acronyms in our budget and other documents, and, um, I know that there should have been more that I could have done for the district, but I also have learned, uh, a lot from members of the board, and also gained a lot of insights from listening to the public. Moving forward, I would be still a senior, and I will make sure to train the next student board member to be, um, even better than I am, and also continue to implement change in the district. And I, as a senior, I will continue to dedicate myself to my community, and, um, I hope that everyone will have a great year next year. Thank you for recognizing me and for the apple.
Okay, um, and with that, we're gonna move on to Item 8.2, Student Advisory Council.
Good evening, Superintendent, and our respected board members, my name is Dr. Mark Carnaro, and I will be, um, presenting alongside the Student Advisory Council here, and, um, offering a small introduction into who this group is. Um, I have the distinct honor of being the adult facilitator of the group, um, and the Student Advisory Council is a year-round program that introduces students to concepts of policy advocacy, applied social research, democratic governing, and grassroots organizing. The Student Advisory Council strives to promote student voice within the district and works to take action against problems faced by students. This school year, we had 14 members from different high schools across SUSD, including JFK, Rosemont, CK McClatchy, SES, George Washington Carver, West Campus, and Kit Carson. Aside from the initiative work that will be presented to you in a few moments, the SAC students this year also constructed a monthly newsletter that was distributed, uh, district-wide, um, provided youth voice for the LCAP, helped promote the state seal of civic engagement, and built important partnerships in the school district and community. Tonight, the SAC will present to you their youth participatory action research project centered in health and college access equity.
Um, hello, my name is Jade Fears, I'm part of the Student Advisory Council. Um, the California State Legislature AB 329 requires that all students receive comprehensive sexual health education and HIV prevention education at least once in middle school and once in high school. Uh, most of the students in this district received their high school sex ed during their freshman year of biology. Um, as students of the district, members of the Student Advisory Council have all taken sex ed in their respective, uh, school and had different experiences. Um, we see a lot of potential in our sex ed, uh, curriculum, and are passionate about making positive improvements for the future of our students.
To set the stage for our data collection, we met with Mario Alfaro, a Planned Parenthood spokesperson who told us about California's sex ed curriculum legislation. We also interviewed past student representatives of PEP, which is hosted by Planned Parenthood. Both interviewees reported that they were approached by and able to help many students. This made sense when we looked at individual student feedback on SUSD sex ed curriculum. Jenna Cantwell and Matthew Coleman, district staff who focused on sex ed, provided us the surveys that gathered several hundred students' knowledge and opinions, pre and post-sex ed. These surveys showed that approximately 30% of surveyed students do not want to personally speak to adults about sex ed. 35% post-sex ed thought, quote, "People chose to be transgender," which is an untrue statement, and 31% reported wanting to learn more about topics including relationship abuse, STIs, sexual decision-making, gender identity, and sexuality. We then consulted the CAL SCHLS regarding straight and non-straight students, primarily in grades seven, nine, and 11. We found that a little under half of non-straight students reported having considered suicide, compared to 11 to 19% of straight students. Similarly, 2/3 of non-straight students reported consistently experiencing emotional distress, compared to 1/3 of straight students. And lastly, when compared to non-straight students, around 14% more straight students say they feel connected to their schools and the people within them. And these same trends apply to trans and gender-questioning students as well. Around double the amount of trans slash questioning students report feeling chronic sadness or hopelessness when compared to cisgender students. Additionally, double the amount of questioning students report having considered suicide, and triple the amount of trans students. These data points highlight clear areas of potential improvement regarding student quality of life and sex ed experience. The following are SACS recommendations.
Firstly, teachers could dedicate more instruction time to gender identities, given students report desire to learn more, as well as misunderstanding of the subject. We should also ensure that students know where to access free confidential birth control and STI testing, since many said that they didn't know where to find them. Teachers could also provide handouts or write resources on the board where students can easily access them.
As data from the survey has shown, majority of students feel more comfortable talking about health and sex with their peers compared to adults. The current required curriculum is only about two weeks long in one year of high school. The district needs more resources about health, sex, and personal identity available on campus and accessible to all students. Our group reached out to previous students in Planned Parenthood's PEP Peer Educator Program, where students were trained to help educate their peers on protection and resources. These peer educators found that their assistance in sex education classes helped students feel more welcomed and open. We feel that there isn't enough health education information available outside of two-week sex ed period during freshman year. The pandemic and other factors could also affect the quality of the instruction that students of different grade levels have received over the, the past few years. In order to provide information outside the sex education curriculum and for students of all grade levels, we would like to implement a student representative program with the Connect Center that specializes in health education, HAE Ambassador, which stands for Health Education Youth Ambassador. Next slide, please. One or two HAE ambassadors from grade 10 to 12 will be selected from each high school in our district, similar to the SAC. Their primary focus is promoting safe health practices on campus. Their duties include holding health education fairs and games during lunch, providing LGBTQ+ support during pride month and year round, and spreading awareness on substance use. They can also hold forums, one-on-one peer help, and provide accessible resources, et cetera. These students will receive trainings as well as materials like condoms and other contraceptives from Planned Parenthood to pass out to students. We are hoping to approve this program and launch during the 2022-2023 school year. Our team will also look into potential grants to make HAE ambassadors a paid opportunity. This program offers students who are interested in health education leadership opportunities. It will also help curate a safe and inclusive environment on campus. Thank you, and now we will pass off to our second group.
Hello, and thank you for listening so far. My name is Marani Bowens, and I'll be introducing the Aiding for College Applications Initiative. So some context for this initiative is that college applications are not free, and 70% of students in Sacramento City Unified School District are socially, socio-economically disadvantaged. We posed the question, how much does the average SUSD senior spend on applying to colleges? We, as the class of 2022, and as college applicants, applicants ourselves, have become well-acquainted with the college application process. Having gone through experience of applying to college, we have learned one vital thing. College applications are expensive, upwards of $70 for a single application to, and, to an institution, which varies, and though fee waivers are available, they are often not utilized or given to many students. We will now look at some data.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Galan, and this is for data. We conducted a survey that was roughly about 170-plus students, uh, across the SCUSD high schools, for only seniors. We started this collecting data in February of this year, and when we opened this survey, it was during the process of students doing the application for colleges in the very beginning. A majority of students who applied to colleges, uh, had applied to three or more colleges, so that was roughly about 60% in our survey pie chart. Only 43% of college, of college applicants did qualify for fee waivers, but 53% of students who did not apply to college would have if a fee waiver had been available to them. In our graphs, these are snapshots from Christian Espinoza, these are not our numbers, but as you can see here, between 2019 and 20, uh, excuse me, uh, 2020, seniors had submitted a FAFSA application for colleges. Those numbers are more greater than how was this year. In this chart, as you can see, you can see that, um, seniors who had submitted applications to Sacramento City, Sacramento City College, their percentages were roughly about 20% um, higher than previous years than this year. As you can see for 2019, it was roughly about 51% who had sent applications, and then down below for, uh, SAC State University, you can see in our charts that mostly between 2019 and 2020, they had a greater number than it was this year. Given the data presented by my peer, we, our main proposal is that at least one college application be paid for per graduating SCUSD student by the school district. This will ultimately encourage all or most students to apply to at least one college. The district could also partner up with the local universities, such as SAC State or UC Davis, and provide a free application for SCUSD graduating students. Um, as shown from the graph in the previous slide, um, numbers of applicants to SAC State have considerably reduced compared to 2019 and 2018. And by paying for one application, it will provide the opportunity for more students to apply to college and seek higher education despite financial circumstances. Um, we do understand that this will cost the district quite a lot, and the estimated cost that we calculated was about 231,000, and we got this number from $70 per application and the graduating class, the graduating seniors of 2022, which was 3,300, and that would cost about 231,000. Um, if this request is too unfeasible, we also recommend that students could earn the money through measures such as filling out an application or writing about why a waiver would benefit them. Since high school counselors do have, um, the power to grant students a waiver, this could be an incentive through which they could earn it. Um, high school counselors could also meet with the entire senior class at each respective SCUSD high school and work with students individually to create a mandated scholarship profile, so if they don't get a fee, a fee waiver, they could apply to scholarships, and that could also help meet their financial needs. Thank you. The representatives from both initiative groups will now take questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You all did a very good job on two really important topics. I do want to ask if there is any public comment?
We do not have any.
Okay, so with that, we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion, and I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments to please queue up. Board Member Murawski?
Thank you, Student Advisory Council members, for your work that went into this presentation and the research that you did. I think it's really, was really excellent. It was very well presented and really compelling. I'm very supportive of the HAY Ambassador program. I think it's a great idea, and I would, I would love to formally request that staff take that back and analyze that for potential, bringing it back for our revised budget, post forty-five days, post, post the state budget, because we will be doing a budget revision at that time, and if funds allow it, I would like that to be brought back to the board as an option to adopt for next year. So I appreciate, appreciate all your efforts, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Board Member Villa?
You guys did a really good job on this presentation, both for information, again, things that, to be in your shoes, to come to present to the board are really critical things that we need to, we need to implement. A two-week sex ed period is just not enough. We all know that, it's not enough. So I too, I support Lisa's ask, let's request and see what we can get that moving forward. Have any of you had a chance to speak with Planned Parenthood to see if there can be any partnerships at this point, based on this recommendation? Okay, so they're in favor of this as well and would like to see a partnership between SUSD?
During our initial planning period, we did talk to Plant Parenthood, and we got our information about their program from them. And recently, we have talked to the Connect Center, and since we already have an MOU with Plant Parenthood, if we get their collaboration, that would be really easy, and it's highly likely that they would be supportive of our program.
Wonderful. And I think there are probably a lot of other great organizations through the city that would love to support this, so I too am support, amazing job. Thank you for taking the time to do all the data and survey your students as well. I know that takes time, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Board Member Villa. Board Member Phillips?
I, I have seen Planned Parenthood's program in action, and it is a fabulous program. What I heard you say was that there was an MOU already that would prevent us from using Planned Parenthood?
No.
Okay.
It's collaborating with them, that's the MOU that I was talking about.
On the student end, or?
The district.
Okay.
There's an existing partnership already.
And who's that partnership with?
Between the district and Plant Parenthood.
Okay.
So their, their request would simply expand that partnership.
Okay, and this is only for the two weeks, or is this for, like, every year? Because I personally would love to see sex ed every year, instead of just freshman year, but you guys already said that, so.
Yeah, uh, the motivation behind this is that two weeks is too little, and all of us got it in freshman year, so we feel like there should be more support in this field outside of freshman year, and we would like to do more campus activities that engage everyone, instead of only in a classroom.
Okay, keep the conversation going. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Phillips. Board Member Rhodes?
Yes, um, once again, thank you guys for presenting today. I think the HAY initiative is great, and also coupled with the partnerships that we're already building, we already have with Planned Parenthood. Snack Sacramento Native American Health Center, which is building a community clinic across the street from Burbank, which has a connection for students to be able to walk and get sexual health, to get contraceptives, all those things connected to the, direct to the school site, and students having direct access to enter and go back and forth, and the MOU there as well. Those type of partnerships are going to continue to help the sexual health of our students. And so, HAY plus Planned Parenthood plus Snack, these things are going to be able to build upon each other, so the work that the district's already doing, in collaboration with the work you guys are presenting, could bring a very strong front for our students, so thank you. Now, moving on to your other initiative as well, I think the paying for college applications is great. I mean, you guys said, if I'm right, two, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand? Okay, and, you know, there's other things that we, I would like to also couple, I say, I say this one often, but even for students who use, sometimes they don't know if they're going to apply to a college, or they don't know if they have the grades to get into a UC system, or anything like that, at the, at the Los Rios level, students can already go, once they graduate high school, they can already have the tuition paid for the first two years, and a lot of our students don't take advantage of that either. And so, coupled on what you guys are talking about, I believe we should have a partnership with Los Rios, to where every student receives an acceptance letter to Los Rios directly. And the students who are going to UC Berkeley or Sac State, they'll, maybe they'll receive it, but they was like, okay, I'm already choosing to go this route. But students who had no idea, that are thought process, that I'm going to go this way, receiving an acceptance letter from Los Rios with a, with something saying, "Visit your counselor to set up classes," is huge, and it can change the trajectory for a lot of students, so they can take their two years and then transfer and matriculate to UC, or whatever they want to do. So this is probably my, my fourth or fifth time saying this, but what I want to do is connect with the district to see how we do that. Other districts already do that. Coupled with paying for applications, partnership with Los Rios to send out that acceptance letter and connection with your counselor, I think those will also up our college attendance rates, and then also give stronger pathways for our students for higher achievement. So I support all the things you're doing, and I would like to, to come back also with the, with the college payments and see what that looks like in our budget. And then, I don't know who I need to talk to, I keep on saying this, but I don't know who I talk to about Los Rios, but we need to get that going as well, like ASAP, and I'm tired of talking about it on the board, actually, I want to do some action behind it. So bringing that also forward to us, Superintendent, around that as well, so thank you. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Board Member Rhodes. I believe we already have the acceptance letter from the community colleges that goes out in the college applicant, the college acceptance packet or information packet, so it's, it's all part of the mix, so, but we can certainly build upon that, so, thank you. I do want to commend you for, for all the work that you did on these two important topics, and I think the, it comes through that these are very important topics to youth, to our young students, so I just want to commend you for that. I too am very supportive of additional sex ed, the way you're, you're proposing it. I think here, you know, learning from peers is very powerful. I'm the mom of two thirteen-year-olds, and I can tell you that I've tried for many years, and they're like, "Mom, we don't want to talk to you about this." So, you know, so I know that, that they need to get this information from a reliable source, a trusted source, but that it's, they're comfortable space for them. So, so thank you for bringing this forward. I too would ask for this to come back with our revision for our budget, so that we can, that we can talk about how we're going to fund this proposal, so thank you so much for that. I would like to see an expansion to AB three-two-nine, because three-two-nine starts at seventh grade. I also think that there's a space to have a conversation about what something looks like for the earlier grades, because there's so much happening. As a parent, I saw it in elementary school, what, you know, healthy friendships look like, that's really important for our kids to know. So I would like to also request that we start having that conversation to see what that looks like and see how we can fund that in this next year's budget. And then moving on to college applications, I support also coming back for, to fund this in next year's budget, but I would like to see what the average number of applications that our students are submitting is, because if, if they're submitting four, but three, you can, you know, you can have a way, you can waive the application fee, then you have one additional application. When I applied to college, I was a transfer student, so I went to community college first. I applied to like eight schools, because I did not know where I would get in. I was terrified of having too few options, so I just worked and I saved my money, but I spent a lot of money on applications. I got three for free because I was low income, but I just think that, that we need to explore that if, if our students are sending or filling out five applications, then we'd really talk about how do we fund more, in addition to the one that you're recommending. So, but I do, I do want to commend you for all the work, and I think, as you can see, these are very exciting proposals, and that you have support on the board, so that this can come back in August and see how we can fit it into our budget. So Superintendent?
Yeah, just very quickly, absolutely, I think these are examples of why we need to come back after the forty-five day to revise our budget, but I just want to commend you, I did not know what participatory action research was until, well, until my thirties, and the fact that you're engaged in that kind of work already means that you understand the value of doing research and analyzing data and putting data together to inform your decision-making, and so doing it at this young age is very inspiring, and I appreciate Dr. Carnero, your guidance, so that this is the kind of work that our youth are exposed to. We absolutely need more of our students pursuing degrees that bring them into a research field, so that you can continue to inform us on pretty much everything that we do in a school district. So thank you, and I just commend you for that. We will certainly follow up with you. I'm glad to hear that you already are working with some of our staff to get, gather some of this information, and we are going to be sending some emails for follow-up, so that we can come back on these two issues.
Thank you so much, and that was an informational item, so with that, we're going to move on to eight-point-three, an update on COVID.
Does the clicker work in, or no? Oh, okay. I'm good. All right. I know, what, I feel so honored to follow that. Oh, just amazing group of young people and things that are near and dear to all of our hearts, so, well, good evening, Vice President Garcia, Superintendent, members of the board, Victoria Flores, I serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. Here with me tonight is Chief Information Officer Bob Lyons, and we are here with a COVID update. So this is an informational item tonight, but we did build in some of our thinking and some of our recommendations that we'll be coming back to you with, so just wanted to frame that up for you. So next slide, please. Thanks, yeah. So funny, that blend between Zoom and real life. And so we wanted to ground ourselves with our CDC community-level data. We've been reporting this on a weekly basis, and our comms team has been sending this out, and so you can see right now that Sacramento County sits in the high range. We actually had a new rating this, this afternoon, this evening. We are still in the high range, but we have some good news. We're actually starting to see some of this decrease. So the current rates, case rates are two-hundred-and-seventy-nine point seven-six, so still well above that two-hundred threshold, but you can see before, we were in the three-hundred range. So starting to see that come down, same with hospitalizations. They're now down to fourteen point two, and they were up at sixteen. What we're looking for is to get underneath that ten. So we're excited, heartened to see this, but this is a really important metric for us. Next slide, please. So we also usually start with COVID updates, and so we wanted to talk about some of the multiple variants that we're hearing about in the media, that we're tracking, that we're learning about. And so this screenshot to the right is from the CDC website, and they have a variant tracker that's called the Nowcast, and they do it by region in the United States. So this is Region Nine, where California is, and you can see that that BA dot two that we heard so much about, that caused that wave that we saw around spring break, followed by BA dot two dot twelve dot one, just to make it more of a mouthful, you know, continues right now, and this is where we're seeing where we're in that high zone. Coming on the heels, and what I wanted to show you, is BA dot four and five are starting to make an impact. And so what we're learning about COVID is it's continuing to evolve. As it evolves, it's becoming more transmissible, and it kind of pushes out that next variant. However, what I do want to also offer is some hope, because we know what our tried-and-true measures are: to continue to test, to stay home when we're sick, to isolate if we test positive, might happen to us, to face mask like we are tonight, ventilate our spaces, you see these portable HEPA filters, vaccinate and treat. And so that is really, you know, where we're grounded. When cases are so widespread, like they are right now, we also see this impact to our hospitalizations, and really that risk to our most vulnerable, and so that's why we attend to this so, you know, so carefully, and are going to see, you know, kind of that shifting in mitigation measures. So based on these patterns and what public health experts are looking at, they're currently anticipating that we can expect to be impacted by a new variant wave about every three months. Don't know how big that impact will be, you know, a lot of COVID is kind of unknown, but you can see it in these colors, how each variant tends to push the next one out. We are also seeing this impact in Europe, and, you know, Britain as well, experiencing this another wave after this, this initial one. Some other really good news, though, as we look at all these variant things, is that there was the emergency use authorization, approval for children six months to five years old. That Moderna vaccine is a two-dose vaccine, and Pfizer is a three-dose vaccine. So we really encourage, you know, all of our families with children that age, connect with their health provider, you know, talk with them about that appropriate timing. And then test to treat, we just really want to encourage everyone also, if you're positive for COVID, as soon as you can, immediately, if you are twelve or over and at high risk of developing severe disease, so this is the actions we can take to protect the most vulnerable, that they reach out and at least learn and get some information about that test-to-treat program. We have it on our website, you can also call and talk to your provider about it. We actually encourage folks to do this ahead of time, because you never know when you might be impacted. Next slide, please. We also have some COVID updates from our federal and state agencies. So the CDC released some operational guidance for schools at the end of May. Clear goal, which we've always led with, is to keep schools open and provide that safe-in-person learning. They're really advising, and this is where I want to focus, on these prevention strategies as part of our normal operations, right, that this is, this is something we're probably going to be dealing with, and so we just need to weave it into the fabric of how we do things, but we also need to still be able to do, you know, our, what, all the things we do in schools and in life. The other thing they call out here is that additional prevention strategies should be tied to that COVID-nineteen community levels, and they give us a specific example of universal indoor mask use as being recommended at the high community level. And so that's something that our board actually took action on even before that came out, because we looked at that, those community levels, we saw that masking really is, you know, you should be masking indoors when we're high, and so it was nice to actually see this reflected in the guidance. CDPH also came out with a preliminary testing framework, so I just want to caution the preliminary part. They did say that primary test- They did say that primary testing will be rapid antigen. We've already made that shift in our district, but we will still retain PCR. The at-home test kits may replace or supplement school-based surveillance testing. That's something we've really successfully used in our district. And so we're really excited to see how that can move forward. You have to have an updated MOU with CDPH done, check, and we're in the queue. And then CDPH staffing support is contingent on the state budget adoption. They fund thirty FTE of our surveillance testing team that's out and about. You've probably met them here, you know, if you've done testing at Cerna or Meadowview or Einstein. So we're going to wait and see what that will look like as well. Next slide, please. So now we're drilling down to the local level and just wanted to give a little overview of what our response has looked like just this school year. We've hosted eighty-four vaccine clinics throughout the district, just in this one year. In this boardroom, a lot of them. But I just want to give a shout out to our site leaders who have hosted so many vaccine clinics. I've seen some of you all, you know, out though, out at those, opening their doors in their hearts and serving their whole entire community. We provided over seven thousand vaccines, seven thousand three hundred. And we've provided over six hundred and seventy-two thousand tests just from August to now. Most of those in those big, big, you know, peaks of variant waves. Over two hundred and twenty-five thousand free at-home COVID test kits that we provided. We were one of the first districts to pilot that in December, very successfully preventing over about five hundred people who tested positive before they came back. And then we replicated that over and over, right, through three-day weekends, spring break, another three-day weekend. And we are gearing up into summer and next year. We have documented and contact traced over twenty-five thousand cases. When you, when you add up positive cases and quarantine, when we were tracking the quarantines, it's a pretty impressive number when you really sit back and look at it. And over two hundred and sixty additional staff have come on board to help us manage our COVID response. From health aides to surveillance testers, contact tracers and data entry support staff, many of them speaking languages or coming straight from our neighborhoods. So we're also really heartened at the workforce development that we are hoping maybe someday they'll come work with us. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Information Officer Lyons.
Thank you, Victoria. Good evening, board. This slide shows our vaccine, vaccination and testing compliance progress. The bar on the left is from January and the total height of the bar is a hundred percent of our of our students. So starting off the bar on the left on the January, approximately fifty percent of our students twelve and older reported their vaccine status. And forty, about forty-two percent were required to test. The remaining did not submit anything. But compare that to June, our, the graph on the right, about sixty percent of our students reported their vaccine status, so the increase of about ten percent from our January rates. And our testing consent jumped approximately ninety-three percent, a fifty-one percent increase from January. So huge increase and attributed to all the hard work from our health services team. Overall, our student compliance rate was ninety-five point seven percent. That's a great number. So that includes, that compliance means either they turned in their their vaccination status or they consented to test. So we had a small number, we're like fifteen hundred that have not yet consented. So next slide, please. So this is our latest iteration of our COVID dashboards. We've added the seven-day rolling rate in here, the rolling average. And this on the far left goes all the way to the start of the school year, August first. And the far right was the data was from just this past Monday on June, on June twentieth. So the live view, so on the website, you can actually move your mouse around and you can actually get individual counts by day along that graph. And you can change on the exam date, you can actually expand the graph to the full year like you see here, or you can select it within a couple of weeks. So it's interactive on that. The rolling averages are useful for analyzing data for a specific timeframe. And as you can see, you can see trends, long-term trends. And this graph right here shows the whole school year. So it's interesting to see what happened over the school year. And obviously, the big surge was right after Christmas and that's very evident. And then we just, just coming out of another surge right here at the very end of, right before school got out. Now, the Christmas case rate, that Christmas, that very high peak right after Christmas was six hundred and forty-five cases per hundred thousand. That was about three times higher and you can see in this graph, about three times higher than what we've seen just that January sixth was our high. And that case rate is about one ninety-five. So it gives you a good visual about where we're at here. This dashboard is updated every Tuesdays and Fridays. So what we're seeing here is just from, from, from Monday's data that we update Tuesday morning. So currently, our, take a look at that very top of that box, that purple box in the center. So our seven-day average case rate right now is about fifty-two per one hundred thousand. So I'll pass it back to Victoria and she can finish up the presentation.
Next slide, please. So we've presented this slide to the board before earlier in the spring, but we wanted to come back and review it. So I know we've had some questions about what we're planning for summer and twenty-two, twenty-three. And so we just wanted to reassure our board and our community, we've been planning and thinking and we are moving forward. So grounded in equity, right, really looking at all of our efforts and funding to continue to address those health disparities and remove barriers. This is one of the reasons that we've made sure we had COVID testing at every single school site. So it wasn't dependent on your transportation or your ability to get somewhere. You had it right there as well as those regional testing centers. You've seen us look at the metrics, we bring it to you every time. We're looking at those case rates, our own case rates that Chief Lyons just looked at, county levels. We are planning to still have health aides at every single school site to staff those care rooms to not just help with surveillance testing, but testing anytime we might need it. We become symptomatic during the day, it happens to all of us, right? Or we learn of an exposure and you have that testing right there. They're also going to lean into those, some of those COVID recovery activities, like immunizations that we've sort of fallen behind or just other, you know, support for our schools. Testing, of course, we're still going to be, you know, dug in, whatever we can, you know, get from CDPH. We really have learned and we've seen the power of that ongoing surveillance testing to be able to stop, track and trace. That's really our early warning system. Next slide, please. Contact tracing will continue, but this has shifted to more of that individual level. When someone tests positive and then making sure that everyone that had a close contact exposure receives those exposure notices so they know what to do. And so that's what we're focusing on. Masking will continue to be targeted and risk-based. And, you know, we might loosen it at one point, which we did. And then we tightened it based on those changing conditions. But our commitment is to maintain that ongoing stock of high-quality masks. So whatever's coming, we are ready. We are still going to be doing our vaccination clinics. So we are going to have our readiness, our weekly vaccine clinic and our school-required immunization clinic are taking a pause for July. We're going to give staff a little time to breathe and rest, but we already have a schedule planned for weekly clinics restarting in August. So you'll see a COVID clinic on Tuesday, next door at our vaccine clinic. And then school-required immunizations on Thursday, where you can also get a COVID vaccine as well as any other preventative health vaccine. And then really shifting our outreach to families to, are you up to date on your vaccinations and including those other health preventative vaccines such as COVID. And filtration is also incredibly important and so we will still, you know, maintain all of our increased filtration measures. And then like we shared, maintain the readiness for the unknown, remain humble, remain a learner and trying to watch what's happening globally so that we're ready for what might be coming to us here. Next slide, please. So we bring with you to you tonight, though, our face masking recommendation. Now remember, we're just here for informational item, but we wanted to bring you some of our current thinking from what we've learned and where we're kind of seeing us head. So we've tied our face masking to those CDC community levels, much as they've recommended. Those levels are updated every Thursday, usually late afternoon for us. And so right now, we've said when we're at that low or medium level, face masking is strongly recommended indoors, but it's really based on your personal risk assessment. But when we reach that high level, because community spread is so wide and now we're impacting our hospitals, that we would require face masks indoors. The current policy that was voted on was to wait that two weeks following CDC update before shifting from a mask requirement to a recommendation. And I just want to call out that a state or county public health order would of course supersede our local policy. And so we're, what we're looking at for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is to revise our masking policy to the following Monday after that CDC update is made to community spread level. And that just allows us to be a little bit more nimble and really, you know, respond when it's highest risk. And then when we're coming back down, we can go back down to that personal, you know, choice and personal risk assessment. So that's what we're thinking of right now. Next slide, please. And then also looking at a current recommendation, again, just informational on our testing, our vaccine and testing recommendation. So we talked about aligning our vaccine mandate with the state timeline. Right now, that's looking at twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then continuing COVID surveillance testing is indicated by public health guidance. So we know we've got some guidance that has come out, maybe we'll get some more. And then as resources allow, remember, CDPH said that was that preliminary and we're waiting for the state budget to see what will happen. We're committed to continuing our school-based and our district weekly vaccine clinic. So even though our vaccine clinic might be taking a pause in July, we still have community providers that will be doing clinics out at our schools. And then using multiple strategies for testing based on a recommend, recommended testing cadence. So looking at still continuing to do some in-school surveillance testing by trained staff dependent on the availability of that CDPH staffing support. That's a big question for us right now, and so we'll see what they're going to be able to provide. And then really leaning into the use of at-home tests provided for surveillance testing and/or that pre-entry testing dependent on availability. Right now, they're readily available. We can actually order them from CDC and CDPH. And so we hope it'll stay that way. And that's really just being mindful of the impact to academic time, right, and the cost benefit, right, of testing in schools. And, and also the ease and availability of providing them to everyone and if no matter your vaccination status. So this is some of our thinking. And then as we shared, of course, we will maintain that symptomatic or exposure testing through our school site care rooms staffed by our health aides. So that really does serve as a cornerstone. Next slide, please. So we will come back to the board in August, on August eleventh with those updates. We will, of course, continue to monitor conditions and adjust as we learn over the summer program and as COVID evolves. We will, of course, review and incorporate any revisions that come out from CDC, CDPH or SCPH, you know, on guidance or orders or in active conversations with them right now about COVID and wildfires. You know, because this is a reality that's going to be coming to us and we're going to need some real clear guidance. We will continue implementing twenty-two, twenty-three COVID response. That's all happening. We had health aides doing testing today or training today out at Hiram Johnson. They'll be over here tomorrow. And then ongoing training for our new and existing staff on COVID safety measures next year. One thing we don't want to be is complacent and we want to make sure that this, you know, stays on everyone's mind. And with that, we conclude.
Thank you, Victoria and Bob. It's great, I know we were, we were seeing you on a regular basis, so it's good to have you back with an update. So I'm looking forward to the August eleventh update, too. So with that, this is an informational item, but just wondering if there's any. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for the reminder, public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so bringing you back to the board for discussion. Any questions or comments? Nope, okay. Well, I do have a question. I'm just, I'm glad to hear that, you know, we're staying the course in terms of vaccinations, testing and all of that, what we're supposed to be doing. On slide six, you, you had, you know, we saw the the increase of, of students twelve plus that are now fully vaccinated, right? So and then the increase of those students who are not, that have consented to test. So I want to applaud you for that because I know that was a lot of hard work, right? So what I do want to ask is, are we seeing the increase of students being vaccinated mostly due through our own vaccine clinics at a school sites? Is there like a strong correlation with that?
You know, it's a really good question and it's a hard one to answer because we are not legally allowed to access the California Immunization Registry without, you know, like a parent providing us a vaccine record. So we provide a lot of vaccines, right, to our whole community. I think our hypothesis is yes, right, especially school-based ones or ones here next to enrollment center. Right, we're really hoping as families come in for that process to make it kind of a holistic, right, one-stop center. We see that a lot with our new enrollments for newcomers, right? And then they need a lot of vaccines and so then we're offering all those preventative. Our hope, and I know there's some legislation in the works that will change in January. And that was why you'll see that with our immunization outreach for the summer, we're going to fold COVID in and really encourage families as they're, they're sharing those vaccine records with us to also share those COVID vaccine records.
And I do think we are, as a district, we are supporting that legislation that gives us access to just, just to know, right?
Yes.
So thank you. And then I'm glad to hear that we are also, you know, the training for staff. I think that's really important. I did hear from, you know, some parents in our, in our community where they felt very frustrated that, especially when it came back to masking with the reinstatement of the masking, staff were not wearing it and they just, they just felt very uncomfortable for their, for their children. So we need to make sure that, that everyone understands the importance that reinstating a mask is for a reason, we're not doing it just flippantly, right? It is based on science and data. So the importance of masking up indoors is especially important with, starting from our, with our leadership right at school site. So, so I know that Board Member Villa and I, you know, met with some parents who were very, very distressed towards the end of the year because of that. So I'm glad to hear that training for staff is also part of the plan. So, and with that.
Can I just mention very quickly, Vice President Garcia, just a couple of things. One, if I can, thank you, Anne, for going to slide eleven. We anticipate that the biggest update to our community is featured on slide eleven here, where we might stand in August in terms of masking. We also are operating, as you know, summer programming. So we are going to continue to monitor the CDC categories. Should we start to see a reduction going to low, going to medium perhaps, then we will make adjustments. We will not see each other as a board until August. So we will follow the spirit of the resolution that we passed, of course. But we've not been in a position where we go the other way. So we will continue to keep our community updated on this. Again, just wanted to make sure that you see the italicized piece that will be part of the update you get. We are still waiting to see how CDPH is going to make resources available, which we've depended on to stand up the very rigorous testing program that we have. I know that, I say this with all due respect to Mr. Voskas and his public comments, but this is an area where I feel that we should celebrate and thank Victoria and our entire team. It is one of the two areas, I believe, that we are submitting a Golden Bell application just for the amount of work and the agility and how nimble Victoria and team were to respond to this pandemic. And again, I think that sometimes there's more recognition from outside entities than then we slow down to, to do. So just want to continue to say thank you to Victoria and her team for all that they have done around this.
Thank you so much. Okay, and with that, we're going to move on to item eight point four and just wanted to mention that there is, there's an update on this resolution. The, the, the resolution and the agenda has been updated and hard copies are in the back of the room of the revised version so that you can all follow along as needed. So, and also on the website. So, and also on the website. So with that, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Board Member Murawski for the presentation of this resolution.
Thank you, Vice President Garcia. So this, this resolution recognizes June 2022 as LGBTQ Pride Month. This, this is, this is an incredibly important resolution every year, but especially this year, I feel as, as so many, so many things have been happening all across the country that have pulled, pulled in the opposite direction of inclusion. So just wanted to make sure we all knew that this resolution was updated to recognize some of those things. So I'll just, I'll just share a couple of highlights. Oh, and I also wanted to thank Melanie Bean, who's a training specialist here in, in Sac City and CTA Capital Service Center Council for supporting our participation in, in the Pride March. I was honored to represent Sac City in that march. So always, always a great day and a great way to, to recognize. So we have, we got a lot of cheers for, you know, glad Sac City was here representing. So it was, that was really, it was wonderful to see. So a couple of things that I just want to, want to highlight, really lowlight, it's, it's terrible to, to realize, but we need to recognize, and I appreciate our Student Advisory Council also highlighting some of the challenges that our transgender students are facing. So I won't reiterate all of that, but I wanted to let you know that the CDC estimates approximately 2% of students identify as transgender and that 35% of transgender students attempt suicide. These are really, really stark numbers. Even 58% of LGBTQ youth reported experiencing symptoms of depression, including almost two-thirds of transgender and non-binary youth. So this is really a serious, serious situation for a lot of our students. But the good news is, according to the Trevor Project, that LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming reported lower rates of attempting suicide. So that means that the actions that we take at our school sites are really impactful for these students. And I also wanted to, to invite in a moment Board Member Zhang and Board Member Rhodes to add any, any words here. But just a couple of, couple of other things. Our district has allocated new resources to increase staffing. We added two new additional social workers just specifically to provide LGBTQ supports. And another way that we're, I guess we'll talk about shortly, that we're setting aside funds for hopefully tonight is to update our history and social science curriculum, which will also assist with implementation of the Fair Act, which will help with representation in our curriculum. So just wanted to recognize that, you know, that some of our resolutions, we are not able to put resources into, but there are actually resources going into to reflect the good work that's going on in our district. Just one more thing about the laws that have been proposed around the country, and many have been passed. These laws really threaten the well-being of our LGBTQ youth. There's laws that seek to prohibit positive representations of LGBTQ people. There's these laws they call, they call "don't say gay" laws that seek to prohibit schools from even discussing topics of gender identity or sexual orientation. Laws that ban the provision of gender-affirming healthcare and laws that require, this is, this, I, I got really emotional even just learning about this. Can you imagine? Laws that require school staff to disclose a minor's perception of their own gender identity to the minor's parent, parent or guardian without their consent. I am proud to serve in a district that stands against a lot of, a lot of this type of, this, this type of hostility and protects the right, the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming children and their families. And just want to ask you, you know, to stand with me in supporting, supporting that and standing against those laws and moving forward with supporting our LGBTQ students in, in all the ways we do, including GSAs, curricular resources, and our, our wonderful Connect Center. So with that, thank you for, for the time. Appreciate your support and attention to these issues and would invite my colleagues to also assist in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Let's see. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. With that, we're going to bring it back to, to the board for discussion. Do I have anyone who wishes to make any comments, have any questions? To queue up now, please. Board Member Rhodes?
No, I just wanted to say that I, I support this. Representation and acknowledgement for all of our students in the district is highly important. You know, discrimination is, is not welcome here at Sac Unified School District, but we also need to bring up the, the idea that even inside of LGBTQ community, students of color, transgender students feel and are impacted by these things as well. And so uplifting, especially during this month, we celebrate Juneteenth and we celebrate Pride, remembering those students at the peripherals of all of this is very important. And I think that Board Member Murawski did a beautiful job of highlighting and also exalting where we can even do better. And it's amazing that this year, we're going to be putting funds to this as well. So I thank you so much for bringing this forward, and I would second, I know she's moving it, I would second it once it's ready to go.
Thank you, Board Member Zhang.
I would like to thank you, Member Murawski, for bringing this resolution. As a member of the community, it's really great to be represented in the district. And I know that a lot of students are engaging in their community by forming clubs at school. So it's nice to see that students are coming together and the district is also supporting us in terms of accepting our identity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I too gladly support this resolution. Often, schools are safe places for, for our students who are LGBTQ plus. For me, this is just very personal. When my sister, number two, I'm number one of eight, so she's number two, sound like Board Member, former Board Member, Vang, when she was struggling with her sexuality and, and just struggling to come out to us as her family, she found refuge in, you know, in the community she had at school. But that alone did not stop her from trying to commit suicide by, you know, I don't know how she even had access to a gun, but by, you know, playing Russian roulette. And when I heard that, as when she finally came out to our family and we all embraced her, my, my mom had a little bit of struggle being, you know, very, you know, just Catholic, but we're all, we were all so supportive of her. And my mom understanding sort of my, my sister's journey, her painful journey, and her struggle of just wanting to be who she is and, and doing that, it just, nobody should ever have to do that, ever. So I just want to thank you for bringing this resolution forward. I know COVID has made a lot of these struggles even more, more, you know, serious. So I, I am, I'm glad to take action on this resolution. I do have to entertain a motion before I accept your second, Board Member Rhodes. So, so do I have a motion on this? A Board Member Wu, and I will, Board Member Rhodes will second. And with that, student preferential vote?
Aye.
And Superintendent, roll call?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Absolutely.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
I'm just thinking about something that I didn't say. I am a yes on that. I believe, and I know I'm probably speaking out of order, but I just want to make sure that there is a significant uplift for specifically black folks in the LGBTQ community. I think Member Rhodes said that. I, it, it's a lot more important that we keep that in, in our, in our viewfinder. So I'm an, I'm a yes for this, but I just want to make sure that we are certainly highlighting, especially black trans folks, that we really, really pay attention to what is missing in this item, which is pointing out that there is a specific problem with persons of color, specifically black folks in the LGBTQ community. But I'm a yes on that.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. And we have... Okay. Okay, so now we're moving on to Item 9.0, Communications. 9.1, Employer Organization Report, SETA. Seeing no one, okay. Moving on to Item 10.0. These are some action items here, Board Members. So we're going to start, as I mentioned earlier, during our agenda adoption with 10.3, and
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Public, and colleagues. We're here tonight to present the 22-23 LCAP for adoption. We were here last meeting for public hearing, so this will be a brief presentation, but there are some updates and some additional information that we want to highlight. We'll note for the public and for the board that the formal part of the presentation is the first 25, 26 slides-ish. And following that, we've marked an appendix, which should look familiar. It's the breakdown of measurable outcomes and expenditures by action for all the goals. There are some small updates to that where there were some TBDs at the public hearing. Those have been updated. And so where some of those dollars have come in, you'll see that reflected in the summary slides we have in the presentation to show those new totals. So we'll present those first 25, 26 slides, some of which are, again, repeats from last time because this is the adoption, and just stop on the highlights and then present for adoption. Next slide, please. I just want to note that this also includes, you know, per requirement, some brief information on the dashboard, local indicators. Those are indicators for the California School Dashboard that we collect and report on locally that aren't necessarily fed in the same way that state tests or suspension rates or chronic absenteeism are. This would be things like our school climate survey and some other local reporting, and we'll share that at the end here. Next slide, please. So the next several slides are, again, our acronyms and definitions. It was pointed out earlier that there's a lot of acronyms, and LCAP is certainly at the furthest end of the spectrum for that being a problem. And so I definitely want to just highlight for folks that the LCAP itself, we are working on that glossary. It expanded from the last LCAP, and we would hope that it would continue to expand, really to be a tool there for the public. So we'd definitely encourage folks to read the glossary for some fuller descriptions of some of these things. You can skip past the acronym slides, please. Just again, always stopping our core value. I'll just reflect here at the end of the year on the word greatness. You know, there's been some interesting comments tonight that really have given me pause to think about what is greatness? Are we defining it? We know we're not there yet. How are we going to reach it? Those are all the big questions that I'm left with. And next slide, please. And here on this slide, the summary statement exists in our LCAP, just really reflecting on the word inclusive. I think about some of the new goals that have been added this year in the LCAP and a lot of the conversations we've had, and it really is about inclusivity and, and how are we not including all? And what do we need to do in order to include all? Next slide, please. And this is a repeat slide, I won't linger on it, but just going to note this one bolded term that we've had in this slide is that the LCAP evolves, right? It's not designed to be a static document. We've seen that over the last few years, it's changed a lot. And as soon as we adopt it, the next day, it's old, right? We're now working on it again. And so really want to emphasize that evolutionary nature and that we don't have to feel like it's done, it's not in the can, it is then changing. Next slide, please. Again, this is, again, for clarity, we've had this at the public hearing, so I won't linger on it, but we did just comment that it's been a very eventful year with a lot of unexpected circumstances that certainly are not reflected in what would look like a clean set of circles. It was a very rocky year. Next slide, please. This just reminds us of the components that are actually in the LCAP. So when you look at that attachment, that large document, it's got these three pieces. Next slide, please. So this is the new slide, I'll pause here. And the purpose of this slide was just to give folks a sense of what's in that summary. The summary is the first 30 pages of the LCAP. And so if someone were to open up the document and you kind of flip through it really fast, you'll see a lot of numbers and a lot of figures, a lot of dollar amounts, but the first 30 pages are largely narrative, and they are chunked out in some overall information about our district, some reflections on successes, some reflections on needs, and some highlights. And what you'll see inside those sections, you know, for example, that's the geographic and demographic context of our district, and where are we situated, what's our community like, our core value, guiding principle, and just really the through line of acknowledging some of the gaps that we have, you know, where are we not reaching our goals yet? Where are we not necessarily to our core value or guiding principle yet? You'll also see MTSS as a through line through some of these issues. As you look at our successes, it's really the things that you've heard throughout the last, you know, several meetings and going back, you know, the English Learner Master Plan, you know, some of the work that's happening to expand our youth development support services, expanded learning through the ELO, you know, some of the CTE efforts, the State CLO by Literacy efforts. You could see that list, and it could certainly go on and on, but that's just some of the highlights. When you look at some of our needs, you know, we've talked about MTSS, why it's necessary. There's an analysis, analysis in there around how we're not reaching some of our goals if you look at the dashboard, which is older data, but it's also then backed up by more recent data, right? We're still seeing those persistent performance gaps. And then lastly, just some highlights that show what our goals look like in a snapshot. So if someone looks at those first 30 pages, they can get a little flavor for what the LCAP will contain if they then dive into the rest of those pages. Next slide, please. Again, educational partner input is critical. It's something we're always working on and really have appreciated the fact that it's built over the last few years through different plans. And certainly in the next few slides, we're going to do a quick summary of what kind of themes have emerged from these conversations. Next slide. So I'll pause here, and this was presented in one of the May meetings, and, and we shared some more details around each of these bullets. But what we saw was really that the things we've heard in the last few years, the things that were attached more specifically to the pandemic, there are echoes of things that were there before, right? So we've talked a lot about exacerbation of needs or, or further pulling, you know, the curtain off of things that we already knew were true. And really, we heard more personalization of learning, right? The individual support at that individual student level need to happen. We heard early tonight recruitment, retention, development of talent, that's directly connected to folks seeing the staffing crisis, the vacancies, having equitable access to programs and resources, no pay-to-play, right? All students having access to a rich portfolio of opportunities inside and outside the classroom. Early education, we heard about that tonight as well. Representation, diversity, anti-racism echoing the conversations again, and then also community partnerships, really going out into the community, whether it be through the community schools efforts that we know are happening, whether it be connecting through our student support centers, all those pieces. And if you look at the next slide, we shared this in May, that this was the 2020-21 emergent themes, and they look really similar. So it's just kind of reminding us that we're going to continue to hear these things because they're continuing to be things that we're not quite attaining yet, and they, they are going to be the community priorities. Next slide, please. And just always a reminder, again, this is a repeat slide, but the voices of folks really have impacted the LCAP. And again, it's an evolutionary nature, so it's not like every single thing that folks have shared immediately is manifested in a brand-new LCAP. Some of these things are part of the evolving process, so they take time. Next slide, please. So I'll just pause to say the next few slides share the high-level fiscal context of the LCAP. This slide is unchanged from last time because this reflects the projected revenues of the district for the coming year, and those were not changed between the public hearing at this point in time. this point in time. But if you go to the next slide, this slide reflects in the top table what's actually in the LCAP. So if you look at the top table where it says total budgeted expenditures in the LCAP, that number's been updated because we actually added some additional figures. So you can see that, just if we're ballparking and kind of looking at this to take away key point, of the district's anticipated general fund expenditures, $650 million, approximately, in the LCAP, we've represented about $418.5 million of that. About two-thirds of our anticipated expenditures are caught up somewhere in all those LCAP actions. It's certainly not all, but it's a very large, you know, share. And so, you know, that's something that is increasing this year from last year. We've been able to represent some of the ESRS3 actions and some other places. Can you go back one slide, please? Or one more, 17, I think. Other direction, 17? There we go. Sorry, my apologies. And then right under that is the number of dollars in the LCAP that are for high-need students, because that would be attaching to our supplemental concentration funds and the actions related to those. And then the bottom part, you can see what we had anticipated in 21, 22, and where we ended up. And so those are, just kind of hold those general figures in your mind because, not to the dollar, but just kind of the proportions, because we'll see that on the next slide, 18. It breaks it down so that 418 you can see across our LCFF, our other state funds, those would be things like grants, our local funds, and then our federal funds, which is a larger number than usual because we know we've had a lot of federal funding come in. And then we get to that total of 418. You know, the way the LCAP asked us in the most recent years to break some of this out is to also show the personnel, non-personnel breakdown. So the numbers above the 418, total up to 418, and the numbers below a total of 418. So it's just showing it in the form that it would appear in some of those LCAP tables. And then last but not least, the next slide, which I think is just helpful to understand the context of the new LCAP. One of the things we talked about at the beginning of the year is that this is the first year where they're having this track carryover for our supplemental concentration or our high-need students' dollars. So if you look at our table here, you'll see that for next year, we have a projected base grant for LCFF of around $360.6 million. We have a projected LCFF supplemental concentration grant of 86.9. Now, what that generates is that it's what you might think of as an obligation or a requirement that we show we're improving services for students that are defined as students with high needs or are unduplicated students of 24.1% approximately, right? So it's a percentage, and then that translates from the dollar amount. The LCFF carryover is calculated based on this current year. So in the current year, we had an estimated amount of LCFF S&amp;C that we received, and then we have an estimate of what we actually spent. And if we spent less than what we received, then it generates an obligation to carry those dollars into the following year. So that was, in this case for us, it was 2%. And so for next year, 22, 23, instead of that 24.1, we now have an obligation to show 26.1% of increasing or improving services. And so you can see that based on our projected expenditures for high-need students, we do reach that point. We are at 26.1% based on those $94.1 million. That's a kind of a high-level calculation to show what the LCAP is really pushing us to do as a district. It's saying, you get this money for these groups of students, you need to show and demonstrate and be able to show the math, so to speak, of how we're doing that. Next slide, please. So this is just a place to mark that, you know, we updated the numbers from the public hearing, the actual slides for each goal by action, and the metrics for each goal are in that appendix. So you'll see those if you go there. I mean, here are 11 goals at a high, high level. Next slide, please. So the California School Dashboard has been something that we haven't talked about as much in the last few years because a lot of the indicators have been on hiatus, but the local indicators have still been reported annually, and beginning last year, they had us report those with the LCAP, so we're here doing that again. And as a reminder, in that bolded blue box, those are the local indicators. So these are the indicators that don't generate from a standard number that goes into the system that the state automatically grabs and then puts into graphs and charts. They're things that we have narrative around, that we have local surveys for, that we ourselves self-evaluate on, and then report to the dashboard. So if you look at the next slide, you can just see that the requirements for that are really locally based, right? It's our responsibility, our obligation, as well as our charter schools, to do this. And part of that, bolded here, is reporting it to you all. And just note for the public that attached to this board item is a standalone report that details how we're collecting that data and our self-reported results. Next slide, please. Now, I'll pause here for a moment just to say, not to read word for word, but this just tracks for each of the local indicators on the left column, which of our LCAP metrics align to those local indicators. And so in some cases in the LCAP, we're reporting like a subset of a piece of it, right? We're not using like the entire survey, but we do have places that we're measuring with close alignment. And so what you'll see in the local indicators on the dashboard in some cases is just a replication of what's already in our LCAP. It's going to be some of those same indicators, right? It's not two separate processes, they're largely the same process. So you can see we have, in Priority 1, very much what you see in the school accountability report cards or the SARCs. That's the same kind of information you'll see with instructional materials, staffing, and also facilities. In Priority 2, it's a local survey. In Priority 3, it's a combination of surveys and also our face departments, internal evaluation. For Priority 6, it's our school climate survey, which, you know, we were really excited that folks participated in. And then Priority 7 is looking at some of those college and career indicators that we often see from our Director Espinoza. Next slide, please. So next steps. So, you know, pending adoption, we'll submit to the Sacramento County Office of Education. It's required that we do that within five days. We then have a process that happens in the summer where they provide us feedback, and as necessary, revisions will be made to the LCAP and then providing that updated version to them for their board to approve at the county level. And then sometime in the fall, receiving notice from the state to upload those dashboard indicators. Next slide, please. As last time, this includes the dependent charter of LCAPs, and following adoption, they would also be required to submit to the county and to post their LCAPs on the website. Next slide, please. So we're recommending that the board approve the 2223 LCAP as well as the LCAPs for the dependent charters. And I believe the next slide is questions.
Thank you so much. We're going to see if we have any public comment.
We have one speaker signed up, Rich Vasquez.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vasquez. And that's two minutes.
Good evening again. Just want to, first off, thanks, Stephen. I wasn't part of LCAP, I'm actually on it right now, but I did. I haven't been to a lot of meetings this year. It gets overwhelming. I dedicated most of my time to the school sites, so that's what's trouble, is like there's a lot of events going on, so I couldn't fulfill my duties, so that's tough. But I did make 24 straight meetings in a row, so again, I do have the experience and the knowledge. Again, I appreciate, when I first signed up for the LCAP, it was supposed to be Kathy Morrison, and then when I found it was Mr. Ramirez-Fong, I was kind of disappointed because I have some, I like, to be involved in stuff, you got to trust people and meet them and talk to them. Even I saw Trustee Rhodes shaking hands out here. That's how you start meeting and building relationships and trying to, even superintendent, right? I saw you at the graduation, so you try to build those connections. So again, I thank Mr. Ramirez-Fong for making the experience enjoyable to extend. Again, a lot of information, I learned a lot of acronyms, this and that. But as hard as a parent, I think, being on the LCAP, I think, coming from Hiram Johnson, a struggling site, most of those parents are not from the struggling sites. So they're like, I'm saying teacher vacancy. How many other parents are living that and can speak up for that? They can't. So it's like I'm speaking up, you know, still speaking up in a tough crowd, and you know, a lot of people kind of, okay, accept whatever I'm living because they, right? They're not living that, they're living the thriving sites. Again, the LCAP is so big, like 300 pages. That's like pretty, okay? And then even myself, thinking about, do the teachers know what LCAP and SIPSA is? So the LCAP translates into the SIPSA, this and that. Do the teachers know that? Do the staff know that? Do the staff know what LCAP is? Do they know what the SIPSA is? Does this stuff even matter? Because again, I've been to every, every school site council, at Hiram Johnson as well. What is, so is I, it's all, all of it is just a sham, right? Am I wasting my time? Again, nobody can have this experience because I'm the one doing it. Who's been to 30 meetings in a row? No. So again, I know I come up here and be animated and this and that, well, that's because I did the work, and I don't see no one else, poor, don't have anything, so that's why I'm the way I am. But hey, so again, so LCAP, SIPSA, this and that. The A through G rate for Hiram Johnson this year was 24%. The graduation rate, we don't even have the numbers, it was 75 to 80, they're saying. So are we satisfied? Again, there has, we got to understand, we need improvement, we're not doing it, we just got a lot more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vasquez. And with that, we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Any questions or comments from the board? Please queue up, Board Member Murawski.
Hi. Thank you again, Mr. Ramirez-Fong. This is a question, maybe, I'm not sure if it's for you or maybe just to bring back, but, you know, we had some conversations, oh, I don't know, was it a year, over a year ago, about, you know, how we could better communicate the LCAP to Mr. Vasquez's point? So, you know, I don't know if we have thought about developing, you know, those infographics or, you know, some, something that can really communicate it well out to the public, like a two-pager or just, I guess, what are the plans for, you know, how we kind of bring this, make it more accessible? Thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, we worked on, we have some very early versions, worked with the comms team. You know, actually, again, kudos to them, this was when they were smaller in form, and the LCAP PAC has expressed some interest in taking a leadership role on that. So actually, just at our last meeting, we looked at that draft, as well as a two-pager we've had, which has been a little more narrativy, and then also some examples of what you might see at another district. And so really excited for them to take that and run with it, because they are the parents and caregivers, having them lead and say, well, this is helpful, this is not helpful. And they have talked about having potentially a one-pager, maybe a two-pager, and then probably a 10-pager, acknowledging that no one tool is going to do all the things, because in the conversations they've had in the last few meetings, we've heard, well, it has to be less is, less is more, but then you can't fit everything on the one. And so I think what they'd anticipate is probably having a one-pager, maybe a two-to-five, and then a 10. And we looked at some external examples of districts that use outside folks, but they actually, or I think it was a good conversation of, we probably do something better inside because, you know, it'll best represent the needs of the district.
Oh, wonderful. That's really great to hear, and I would just encourage us to, you know, just get, get those out to the school sites, like in hard copy or, you know, like just think about ways to really make that tangible for people, because I think it's just a great product, and I appreciate, appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Board Member Villa.
Member Murawski spoke to what I was going to say, you know, putting that on the school sites, just an accountability for us as board members in the district to express what the work is being done, and again, hold everybody accountable to those goals. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, well, thank you. I think, just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I think over the years, it's become easier to read and understand. I can tell you that when the state first adopted or discussed the LCAP as part of the local control funding formula, the vision was that it was a document between 10 to 30 pages, and it is so far from that. And that started in year one. So that has been a struggle in terms of keeping it short, informative, understandable, and meaningful. It just, I don't, it's, it's a really hard balance. It's something that, at the state level, because I work in this space, it's, it's just, it's something that has yet to be solved. But I also think that it's important to, and I'm glad that the PAC is working on this, to make it, to create something that's digestible for parents, that makes sense, that lifts the information that parents want to know. I do, I do, I would like for them to also explore how, how to have a variety of those tools, because sites receive different levels of LCFF funds or supplemental and concentration based on their student demographics. So, so one, just maybe one visual may not be something that can be used at a particular site because their, their school site receives more or less of LCFF funds. So, and that's why it's really important to, I think, start with the SIPSA, with the, with the school, the school, school site plans and how that feeds into the LCAPs. But I know this is a lot of work, I know you don't do it alone, but I know you do a lot of it, and just want to thank the, the LCAP, the Parent Advisory Committee for being a very, a very strong advocate for what we end up seeing as the end product. So thank you for that. So, and with that, we're going to go ahead. You know, I can entertain a motion, Board Member Villa, and seconded by Board Member Wu, student preferential vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Superintendent.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Thank you. And if I can just interject, if you can still stay there, Mr. Ramirez-Fong, I just wanted to commend and thank Mr. Ramirez-Fong for all of his work. This is his last board meeting, Board Members. He is going to be transitioning and hope that it'll just be for a short period of time and that perhaps we can have him back here at Sac City Unified. Mr. Vasquez mentioned the great work that Mr. Ramirez-Fong has done leading the LCAP PAC. We continue, and I continue to say, that we have one of the strongest, if not the strongest, LCAP PACs throughout the state, and in large part, it's because of the relationship and the relational trust that Mr. Ramirez-Fong has with each of our LCAP PAC members. And so I just can't thank him enough for the work. You can see the quality of work that he has always brought to the board, to our community. And I know that I can always rely on ensuring that, that the work is reflective of what our community is asking us to focus on. And so I just wish you the best, Mr. Ramirez-Fong, and hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and we hope to see you soon, too. Okay, so with that, we are going to move on to Item 10.1.
There we go. Good evening, Vice President Garcia, Board Members, and Superintendent. Tonight, we are bringing before you a request to approve a resolution to commit funds. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This slide is just simply a list of the acronyms that you may see throughout the PowerPoint for your information. Next slide, please. And here's the items that we will be presenting and discussing with you tonight. An overview and background of the information, the 2223 proposed budget reserves for the district, options to address the 10% cap limitation, and the 2223 proposed commitments, and then we'll open it up for questions and then seek your approval on this resolution. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of background on what this is and what this means. In 2014, Proposition 2 was established to form the Public School System Stabilization Account, also known as the Rainy Day Fund. And the reason for this was to establish some kind of protection for school districts to prevent them from drastic budget cuts during economic downturns. Prior to this time, districts had experienced some significant budget reductions starting in '07, '08, when the state was going through some economic hardships, and districts saw really drastic cuts to the extent of negative COLAs, which was pretty devastating to many districts in the state. And so this was established to prevent those kinds of things from happening again by providing stability to the state budget during fiscally challenging periods. The other provision that was included with this Public School Stabilization Account was an imposition of 10%, of a 10% cap on school districts combined assigned and unassigned reserves. So in other words, what is left, you're ending fund balance after some things are taken out, school districts are not allowed to, well, there's some consequences, to accumulate a reserve beyond the 10% cap. a reserve beyond the 10% cap when this trigger is enacted. Now, the trigger is enacted when the PSSA balance reaches or exceeds 3% of the total Proposition 98 funding. I know that's a lot of information, it's a little technical. So I'm going to stop there and just explain that for a second. This has not happened before. This is the first time that this trigger has happened. This last year, with the state economy getting a lot better, the governor's budget was able to start making deposits into this rainy day account. And so when the deposits get to a certain level, then that cap of 10% is imposed on school districts. This last year, '21, '22, the state budget was able to afford to deposit sufficient funding into this rainy day fund that reached that 3% and exceeded it by some small amount. And so as a result of that, in the year following that, reaching that 3% threshold, that trigger of 10% cap goes into place for all school districts in the state of California. So that's where we're at right now. We're not alone in this, with this 10% cap being imposed on us. And so, so starting in '22, '23, we're going to have to deal with this 10% cap, and that's what we're here to explain to you tonight, some proposals for dealing with that 10%. So I'm going to stop there, just to see if there's any clarifying questions on this slide and this, yeah, this rainy day fund.
Any questions so far? No? Okay, thank you, Rose. Move on.
And just for your information, in case you want to know how does the governor or the state tap into the rainy day fund? That's authorized by the governor for, under a state of emergency, to, you know, to offset a recession, for things like natural disasters, but that's at the discretion of the governor to do that, within those parameters, so just so you know that. Okay, in this next slide, we're going to talk about the district's reserves, and what does this mean for the district? So for the district's '22, '23 budget, we are projecting that our estimated reserves, and I'm not going to read that whole title of the sign to sign, I think you get that, our reserves are projected at 96.7 approximately. The district's 10% cap is calculated at 64.7 approximately. So when you compare our cap, that's limited to 64.7, to our reserves of 96.7, it's apparent that we've exceeded that cap, right, or projecting to. And by about 30, 32 million, actually, it's 31.9 above. This next slide, I'm going to walk you through that calculation, very briefly, just so you can kind of see the numbers. So again, there's our '22, '23 proposed budget, and our estimated reserves of 96.7, and then the middle bars are the calculation for the 10% cap. This is how the cap is calculated. It is based on our district's '22, '23 proposed budget estimated expenditures, and those are estimated at 647.7 million. It is 10% of that number, which is the green bar that says 10% reserve cap. It's pretty easy to say it's 64.7 million. So that's how our cap limit is calculated. So then we compare that to where we, where our reserve is estimated, which is the top bar, the 96.7, and you see that, you know, there's the math, where we do exceed that cap by 31.9. I'll pause here in case there's any questions. Okay, next slide, please. So what do we do? How do we address this? Well, ed code gives us three options to address their 10% cap limitation. The first one is that we have a defined plan in place that we're ready to execute, meaning we have FTE defined, we have supplies and services defined, it's a program that's already been in the works, but lacks funding, and we're ready to pull the trigger. And to, in order, and we can do that to spend down the reserves and get below that 10% cap. That's option one. We're not in that position right now. We don't have a defined plan. Two is we can seek a temporary waiver from the Skoey Sacramento County Office of Education, per this ed code listed here. This waiver is only valid for two years. There's some conditions, though, that have to be met. We have to substantiate the need for the excess reserves in a statement. We have to identify an extraordinary fiscal circumstance. It has to be something, and I was talking to Skoey, because the first time anyone's going through this, and so what would qualify is that. Some examples given to me were, for example, an unbudgeted grant that we received very late in the year, and perhaps we just received the revenue, but we didn't, so that caused our fund balance to get pretty large, but we have not yet budgeted those expenses. So that's one example. An ongoing concern, let's say that we were in a situation where, in our out years, our deficit would be super large, and we were projecting that we wouldn't meet our 2%, then we would, that possibly would qualify for an extraordinary fiscal circumstance. And then the third condition is that we have to provide evidence that we have no other fiscal resource to fund this extraordinary fiscal circumstance. And then, you know, then there's that little bit of a gray area, where if we have that condition, then this can also be considered a commitment, which is the third option, and this is the recommended option. The third option is that we can classify these excess reserves, or more, to committed or restricted categories, and this is what we are recommending. These are amounts that are committed and approved by the board for specific purposes that have some dollar amounts. And all of these committed funds must be approved by a majority board vote no later than the reporting period, which is June 30th, basically when our budget has to be adopted, which is June 30th. So those are the three conditions. And, and the next slide, if we can get to that one, simply restates that the district is recommending that the board approves option three to address the excess reserves, and that would be classifying to committed categories. And then that takes us to our next slide, which is the proposed commitments. And here, I'm going to clarify something. We had a correction to our commitments. Our actual resolution table is, had a couple of errors, that we just caught that this evening, we apologize for that. We have copies available in the back table, and we have handed out a corrected copy to our board. Our executive summary and our cover sheet have the correct commitment table, but our resolution was not updated to reflect a couple of minor edits, and so I just wanted to clarify that. One of them, it includes a line item for declining enrollment, that is not in this slide, and our resolution also excluded the communications line item for $60,000. So this slide that you are seeing here is the correct proposed list of commitments, just to clarify. So here's our list of commitments, with the first one being professional learning communities for 3.1, and then a textbook adoption that was mentioned in the previous presentation, for 13 million, funding for MTSS of 400,000, some anti-bias and anti-racist professional learning for 400,000, communications for 60,000, summer school program, 5 million, support for transitional kindergarten, 48,000, and then our 3% additional reserve per board policy, 3100, that was approved by our board in March of, the 4th of March of 2021, for 19.4. The total amounts of these are 41.4 million. And these are items that the district has identified as needs and programs that need to be implemented but lack of funding source. And so that's how this list was developed, just for your information. And I'll pause here in case there's any questions, or superintendent may want to make some comments.
Just very quickly, I do want to interject very quickly, board members, on the first item, that should read simply as professional learning opportunities. We do anticipate that in our implementation of our multi-tiered system of support, we will not change working conditions for our employees, but do anticipate that there is going to be a need for us to continue to work and have more professional learning opportunities at sites, at the site level. And so I just want to make sure that we make that notation. It should be just professional learning opportunities, as opposed to professional learning communities. And then the only other item that I just want to add a little bit of detail, and really thank Rose and her team, was for just reminding us of the importance that the board placed on the board policy that set out to increase our reserve amounts when possible. And so we do think that it's important to try to reach that reserve amount that we had strived for when the board adopted that particular policy, and that is allowable and a recommendation that we are making to the board this evening.
Next slide, please. Okay, so what does this mean for our reserve cap? So again, I'm just going to recap that. We were projecting our fund balance to be that 96.7, and now when we apply our proposed commitments to that 96.7, which is total 41.4 million, this revises our fund balance down to 55.2 million. And again, we compare that to our cap limit of 64, and we see that, you know, we are slightly below that cap, so now we have, we are in compliance with that 10% cap. Next slide, please. And I'm pretty much at the end of the presentation, I just wanted to share a couple of very important points with you all here, is that this, again, is not something that is written in stone. We can change this with board action. The board does retain the authority to make changes to these amounts and these categories throughout the '22, '23 fiscal year. However, this action must occur prior to us closing the '22, '23 fiscal year, because our auditors will audit us on these commitments, and see, check for progress, check for reasonableness and spending. And so it's really important that the board be aware of that, and as we come back with budget revisions or updates, we will keep you posted, of course, and updated on the progress we're making, or any anticipated or needed changes, because circumstances may change. So one really important thing to keep in mind, that the state budget has not yet been enacted, and we know there's still some negotiations behind the scenes, especially when it comes to some of the funding categories, the one-time discretionary, the ADA relief, I believe is the other big-ticket item, and the COLA. Those are pretty significant, until they get really ironed out and finalized in the state budget. Once those are done, then we will determine actually what the funding, what that means in terms of funding for the school, for this school district, and we will come back to you with the revised budget, which follows, we're allowed 45 days after the governor signs, and share with you what that does to the district's budget, and also the reserves, right, because we'll have our ending fund balance updated, and that may also change our 10% cap, which may change our commitments as well. And we know that staff is still working on that commitment list to refine it, so there may be some additional information that comes back to you then. So I just wanted to kind of clarify all those points. And just, again, wanted to reiterate that this is brand new for all of us, all of school districts are going through this for the very first time. We were not anticipating this, and I mean, it happened out of a good reason, because the state budget is so healthy, and we just got, you know, potentially lots of money coming in, some of it one time, and it just created this trigger. But, you know, we were able to manage it with this commitment. So my next slide is just opening it up to questions for the board, and then we will seek approval.
Thank you, Rose. And with that, we're going to see if we have any public comment.
Yes, we have Taylor Kayata signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Kayata, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I think this resolution looks good. This seems to be a good way to deal with the situation we're in with these funds that need to be allocated or spent in some way. My question and comment tonight is, how did we get here? As a member of the public who's been watching this happen for the past couple of years, it seems almost like a shell game with the money. First, we don't have any money. Then we have too much money. We're moving the money here, we're putting it into reserve, we're holding it for economic uncertainty. Throughout the entire pandemic, this board has continued to put money aside and not use it, when we've increased money. When we have decisions to make, Member Murawski, you're talking about, we don't have enough money to make decisions, this board can't act. This is action, and over the past two years, we could have seen this coming and done something. At the beginning of COVID, we were rightly worried that we were going to have problems, right? It made sense to buckle down. As a state worker, I did that, right? I had to take a pay cut. Within a month, we realized that actually was not the case, we actually were going to have more money than we've ever seen. We saved money by having school sites closed. We got an influx of cash. And we appropriately, you know, this board, members of other boards like this, and the public, lobbied the legislature and said, give schools more money, and we got it. So now we're in a situation where we're continuing to, once again, deal with money as if it's not a long-term thing. It's a constant short-term decisions. We have money now, we've known we've had this money. Two years ago, a year and a half ago, we could have made decisions to put this money into the right place. We could have avoided maybe a lot of the labor strife we had, because we know this money is here. So I mean, yes, this is a good time to do what we're doing now, I think this resolution is good, but I would just say, in the future, let's not pretend that this doesn't appear to be a shell game, that there isn't something we could have done, resolutions we could have made a year ago, to not be doing this at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. And with that, we bring it back to the board for discussion. Any comments, questions? Board Member Villa?
I'll just say, this is a really good problem to have. Obviously, unreserved and reserved, just being on this board, I've learned a lot in the last couple of years of how this works and how our budget works, and how necessarily, how can you explain that to the public and what we can and cannot do? So I'm glad that we're in this position, and I can say for myself, and I believe some fellow board members, we are ready to spend continuously what we can to make sure that we are offering the support for our staff, for our students, for our school sites, and I know that we have worked so hard, our staff, to put plans in place to spend this money appropriately, and not just for the right now, but for the long term, and to also be fiscally responsible. Again, this is a great problem to have. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Board Member Villa. Board Member Wu?
Thank you. So, given that this is 10% cap on reserves, should we be raising the 3% additional cap that we have?
You can. That's certainly a board decision.
Okay. I'm just, I mean, I just wonder, under 3100, our board policy, if we should be raising it to 5% to 10%, you know, to put more money in reserve? Actually, 3% is not very much. What, one month of salary or something like that? More prudent is what we have now. That's about as prudent as we're ever going to get, about 97 million. That would take care of all the foreseeable rainy day funds that we would foresee. We're already dipping into that in the following years, so, but to be able to set aside more money than a mere 3% is, would be prudent, I think.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Wu. And we'll go ahead and go to Board Member Murawski.
Thank you. Yeah, since, you know, since I've been on this board, it has been quite a roller coaster of fiscal excitement. I do want to remind us all, also, that we had a huge infusion of federal dollars that we've, you know, been spending, been, you know, struggling to spend in some cases, not being able to even bring on as many staff as we had dollars allocated for. So one-time money, as the federal money is, as these reserves are, it can pose some challenges. So just wanted to remind us all of that. I am very, really excited, again, for the textbook adoption being one of the, one of the items on here, so excited to see that. Thank you for including that. Just wanted to ask like, kind of clarifying questions about, one, the, you mentioned, Rose, being audited per, you know, these commitments, so what is, what is that, do you have a sense of what that looks like? Is this, is the expectation that, you know, barring any additional board action to change this list of these commitments, that these things would be spent in the '22, '23 budget year?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then, in terms of the 3% additional reserve, because that's not a And then in terms of the 3% additional reserve, because that's not a spending item, just wanted to, I mean, I assume that you've consulted SCOE or the relevant state authorities or whomever to ensure that this is, this is an allowable commitment in terms of meeting the, you know, the criteria that we, or the requirement of the law?
That's correct. And as a matter of fact, in addition to that, also FICMAT put out a really nice summary on, you know, allowable items. And obviously, the 2% economic reserve that the state imposes is not on here because that doesn't qualify. But this one met the qualification because it is specific and it is driven by board policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for that. That's very helpful. And I agree that, I mean, the Governmental Finance Officers Association Reserve, recommended reserve level is 17% as we've discussed before. So just reminding us of that as well. So thank you. I support the approach.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Board Member Phillips?
I just want to ask some clarification from Board Member Wu. When you say that 3% is not enough, but you want to take more of the money and you want us to raise that additional reserve, does it seem to you like we're still like stashing money away? Because at some point, it feels to me like we have to know how to spend our money. Do you?
The reserve is a reserve for uncertainty. We don't spend it, we don't spend it because it is uncertain when we're going to need it. But we have it there for emergencies. Most, most school districts hold their reserve about 15 to 17. For us, it's about 97 million. We are already dipping into it in subsequent years. I'm trying to raise the reserve. I'm thinking about raising the reserve so that we cannot dip into it.
Unless it's an emergency. So you want to use it as the district's rainy day fund?
Yeah, that's what it is.
And to me, it feels like fear, like we're operating out of fear of something happening. And granted, things do happen. But I mean, when do we, when do we start moving forward? That's what it feels like to me. It's, we still haven't figured out a way to explain this to the community, whether we have money or not. And, and I'm looking at this going, okay, it kind of makes sense to me, but at the same time, I'm like, we're still putting money away. And to Mr. Kayata's point is, it's still, it looks like we still want to put money away. We should be spending money on our students.
There is a certain point that you should be saving money. You shouldn't be spending everything you have because tomorrow you may not have that much.
But we have people who don't have anything now, who can't save.
But we don't, we cannot, we cannot, we cannot count on this money.
So we, I mean, we can't count on the money. We can't count on any money that we have then. So we're always projecting that we're going to have a deficit. We're always projecting that there's going to be something taking up the funding. And I just, you know, even looking at these, I'm like, you know, professional learning, fantastic. Textbook adoption, fantastic. But none of this to me is like an immediate and continued improvement for our students. It just sounds like we're putting money in. And professional learning, that's another thing we'll talk about. But I, I just want to, I want to make sure that, you know, I heard what you said, that it makes sense to improve or to increase the cap that we have to save for a rainy day. And then that rainy day doesn't come, or we project that rainy day will show up eventually. We're operating out of fear. It feels like we're operating out of fear. And I don't think we're taking enough risk to benefit our students. I truly don't. That's just my opinion. But I hear what you're saying, that, you know, we could raise it. And I would just like to hear what maybe the rest of my colleagues, how they feel about raising that cap and putting more money away.
Thank you, Board Member Phillips. And I think that is it for comments. I do want to just share some thoughts and maybe ask a couple of questions. Districts up and down the state are doing this. I mean, this is something that actually nobody really thought we'd ever get to. The triggers at the state level were like, oh, that'll never happen. And then over the last couple of years, as we met that one and that one, and now we've met this one, so we have to, we have to figure out how we're going to spend our dollars down to have, meet the new requirement. I also think that maybe this is something that's going to happen next year as well, right? Because we've already met those, that has been triggered. So at this point, we can't like put the genie back in the bottle. I mean, this is something we're going to have to start doing every year, probably until something changes. And one of those factors can be a recession at the state level, right? So can you talk a little bit about that? Because this is not like a one-time thing that we're going to have this conversation. So just in terms of the very robust discussion that we've heard so far, that it's not our, you know, first and last bite at the apple, that this, this could be something that we can plan for a little bit more thoughtfully moving forward, so.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Vice President Garcia. And that's a really good comment and point to make. And as a matter of fact, the governor is proposing in the 22, 23 budget to make additional deposits into this stabilization account, which would mean that it would be in effect. It would, it would trigger that 10% in 24, in 23, 24 for school districts again. Now, that would impact us, assuming that our reserves are in excess of 10% of the cap, right? We don't know what that number is going to be like because a lot, there's a lot of one-time money in this reserve fund balance for the district. One of the big ones, and I should have mentioned this, is the 49 million in the one-time money that is proposed by the governor. We know there's been some discussion about possibly restricting that. Right now, the way it was included in the May revise is unrestricted, which means that it's sitting in our fund balance as available, so it counted. If it becomes restricted, that changes the game for us, right? Because then we have to build in expenses that equal that 49 million, which will reduce that reserve. That's why I'm saying when we come back in August, all that'll be clarified. Should have a state enacted budget. Those details should be known and we'll let you know, of course, how our ending fund balance will be impacted by that. But yes, it has been projected and we're reading a lot of information on this 10% cap that for the foreseeable future, that 10% cap will remain in place, assuming that the state continues to do as well and the governor continues to deposit into that rainy day fund.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, how were these proposed commitments identified?
We worked with our academic office to get some information on any unfunded needs in there. I think the superintendent wants to make a comment about those, some of these areas.
Yeah, thank you very much, Rose. And thank you for the question, Vice President Garcia. I actually think that this slide goes to the heart of the focus on the supports that our students need, in particular, given the impact that we've already been able and have started to measure of the pandemic. And so we do think that this is a great opportunity for us to invest wisely in textbook adoption. We've not been able to do that systematically, particularly in these areas. I know that we've had a number of public commentators in the past that have reminded us of the very aged Spanish textbooks, for example, that our students are still working with. And you also have been very supportive as a board of our focus on the other initiatives that we have here. There are some minor ones. I know the communications piece, this is the board's request that we try to figure out how to mitigate the continued enrollment decline, trying to figure out if there's something that we could do around marketing. But beyond that particular investment and the 3%, the reserve allocation, these are all, these are all investments that would benefit our students directly. I will mention just on the policy 3100, the reason why we're coming with that recommendation is because the board did adopt that resolution. And so all we're doing is making a recommendation to fulfill it. And I think to your point, Vice President Garcia, the board would, could have a separate conversation about whether to amend that resolution. But for the moment, we're simply recommending that we fulfill that board resolution that was passed about a year and a half ago, if I remember correctly. So this was done in consultation with our academic office. Our chief academic officer couldn't be here this evening. She was, we spent the last day and a half at an institute and so she got caught up in traffic and wasn't able to make it. But generally, I'd say this comes from consultation with our academic office based on the focused areas that we have identified.
Okay. And what about summer school programs? Because there is like a separate funding source for that, the Extended Learning Opportunity Program that can fund summer school. Is that correct? So I'm just trying to figure out if this is one summer, is it multiple summers? Is it, does it augment that other funding source in terms of offering summer school? So we can have like a robust summer school program that catches up students? We know that the pandemic had a big impact on academics and social, emotional as well. So I'm just trying to sort of process what 5 million for summer school programs means?
Yeah. Again, I think, very good question. There were a variety of reasons why this year we weren't able to stand up a robust, academically oriented summer school program. But again, we are, I just was forwarded an article talking about the second wave of COVID learning loss that should be happening over the next two years. So this is us thinking that in order to build a very robust and academically centered, not just focused on credit recovery, but academic enrichment, very focused supports for students in small sizes. We tried doing that last year, as you remember. But again, because of different circumstances, we were not able to stand up the kind of summer school program that we would have wanted this summer. I would have wanted, but we just weren't able to do that. We do think that this gives us an opportunity to really plan ahead and supplement our efforts over the next academic year as we start seeing some more robust instructional frameworks being adopted by our school sites through MTSS that we want to allocate some resources for a much more robust summer school program for next summer.
Okay. And then just my last question, because I don't see it on here and maybe it's somewhere else, but you can maybe help. You know, the need for student support, whether it's counselors, mental health, social workers. So just wondering where that fits into, you know, supporting that with additional funds? If we have this opportunity to, to make these additional commitments?
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about?
I will. In fact, I've asked Victoria Flores to provide an update to the board on that. We do think that that is one that we want to come back at the 45-day revision as we continue to study just how viable we would find an investment in this division that Victoria leads. And so I'm going to ask her to kind of just give you an update on where we stand with our assessment of that. And then we're able to come back at the 45-day revision as well. Part of the balancing that you can hopefully appreciate, board members, is that just as Rose indicated, all of these expenditures, we see them as one-time in nature. And so we're trying to make sure that we're studying where we stand with the investment that, or the adoption from last year to hire more mental health supporters or support providers. Victoria will give you an update, but it's just an area that we're struggling in terms of filling vacancies and such. And we're also mindful that that was done with one-time funds. And so as those vacancies aren't filled, the expiration date is still, is still upon us. And so we're trying to figure out how to balance the use of one-time funds and not overcommit expenditures that we might not be able to sustain either.
Yeah, I just want to thank the board for making this commitment. We've never seen this kind of expansion in support. So I think we shared that we've onboarded 21 new staff this school year, ranging from social workers, coordinators, specialists, to youth and family advocates. We have four social workers that we had to offer contracts for, for next year because they actively worked in a district that wouldn't release them. And so we said, okay, let's just go to next year, right? You know, we kind of cut our losses and locked them in. So we were really grateful for the partnership with our HR department to be creative. We interviewed nine social workers this past Friday. We offered five because we want high-quality folks with the right heart and vision and ethics, I will say. And three have accepted and two are pending. I was actively texting one of them tonight. So, because you know, this is the season, right? And every other district is also expanding, as well as community-based providers and, you know, SCOE and all of behavioral health. So there's a lot of fierce competition right now. We have an open eligibility pool that we just continue to kind of track. And we are working to expand, you know, as much as our workforce pipeline will allow. So we do have a plan in place and if we can staff accordingly, based on that last plan, we'll have supports at every single school site this next year. I'm really hopeful it's looking more like we'll get pretty close. Then we can look at any other additional, you know, funds that come. I will say, I'm always concerned about one-time funds because that's often a question we get in interviews. What's the funding source? Because in, in mental health and social supports, we all know it's a lot of grant funding. So that is, you know, something we'll need to look at as well.
Thank you, Victoria. You know, I am still interested in seeing that all our school sites have at least one FTE. And I know that, that I think we'll, we'll get there over time because the workforce is just not there right now. But I think we can still aspire and plan for that and put money behind it. So we also know that trauma and a lot of that is going to have, has long-term impact. We're talking about five, six years from now, we're still going to be dealing with the trauma that the pandemic had on many of our students. So that's not a need that's going to go away. And I hear you on the one-time funds, but I think because we have one-time funds, we can make these investments and we have to figure out how to make them sustainable. And, but we advise this time. So, but thank you. I know you're working really hard to, to support our, for all our sites to have some level of support starting next year. But I wish we can get there faster. So with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and move on to Board Member Phillips and then, and then we'll, we'll take some action.
Can we make sure to put on the agenda when it's available for us to talk about increasing the reserve, the 3%? Because obviously, nobody wants to talk about it. So I may be off agenda, I don't know, but can we figure out a way to get that on there?
So you're asking for the discussion to amend the resolution 3100 to increase it beyond 3% for that, for that conversation to come back to the board?
It sounds like a conversation that we should have. I mean, obviously, I mean, it's been mentioned once. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I do think that it would be something that we could, we could talk about.
Okay.
I don't know when that's going to happen.
Okay. And are you requesting that that come to us during the next, the 45 days after the state budget is adopted within that space or sometime next academic year?
I would prefer in the next academic year. Of course, that depends on what Member Wu might be thinking. But we haven't had a talk, we haven't discussed it. So that's what I want to do.
But Board Member Phillips, you can tell us what you're thinking. If you're, if you're going to propose that that discussion happened then the next academic year, then we can certainly entertain. we can certainly entertain that request, and we can just talk about it after, sometime after July 1st. Is that what, is that when you'd like to see it, and not part of this next year's budget? Because ultimately, then that would be, that would impact the budget for '23, '24.
Yeah, I was addressing what Member Wu was talking about. And we're up here having a conversation. I don't necessarily agree with that. I just, obviously, we're not going to do it in the next 45 days. So, I mean, we can look at it, and I guess I will have to figure out what we'll be talking about. But I just wanted to hear what my colleagues thought about that. If it's not on agenda, if they don't want to answer, that's perfectly fine, but I just want to...
So this is what I'm going to propose, because this is what I think I'm hearing from you, so please correct me if I'm not. So I would propose that any discussion about amending Resolution 3100 come to the board and to consider, you know, changing it from 3% to whatever, as part of the '23, '24 budget, and not this next. So that gives us time. It gives us a whole year to have this conversation. And it could be agendized, I don't know, sometime this fall, not that far off, to have that discussion.
What you're saying is I didn't use the right verbiage in order to express what I needed.
I just needed to hear more clarity, but are we good?
Sure.
Okay, so, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. So we will have a discussion, just not for this '22, '23 budget, but '23, '24, if we choose to amend up. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt. Board Member Villa, and do I have a second? Board Member Wu, student preferential vote?
Can I? I'm sorry. May I? I just wanted to clarify the motion, just because the resolution in the original agenda packet had an error, so just that the motion is for the corrected board resolution that reflects the 60,000 for communications. It's the one listed in the executive summary and in the presentation as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The student preferential?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, Superintendent?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Yep. Okay, with that, we're moving on to item 10.2. Rose?
Yes, and tonight, we're bringing back to you the proposed budget that we shared at the last board meeting. We're not going to go through all the slides again. Not very many of the details changed. I will have asked Jessica C. our Director of Accounting Services just to come up and give you an overview of the changes in the proposed budget, the proposed budget to adopt from the last time that you saw this presentation, very brief.
Thank you, Rose. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar. This is the, to adopt the proposed '22, '23 budget. Next slide, please. In this presentation, we will be discussing the multi-year projections during a recap, and we'll also be taking a look at the changes since the public hearing, and then moving on to a summary recap of the budget, and lastly, adopt the proposed budget. Next slide, please. This is the multi-year projections as of the proposed budget for 2022, '23. There are no changes in any of these figures since the public hearing. Just a reminder, looking at the 2024, '25 year, a $13.6 million decrease, of which 2 billion is on the restricted side, which represents the spend down of educator effectiveness dollars, and 11.6 million is on the unrestricted side, which represents the target to eliminate deficit spending. Next slide, please. This slide highlights the change since public hearing, which is the presentation that Rose provided previously, which is the additions of commitments within our fund balance. This table highlights how those commitments flow into our fund balance and result in the revised unassigned, unappropriated amount of 16.6 million in that bottom row. Next slide. This is the summary of our budget. As Rose mentioned, this was a slide we had provided in the previous presentation, so we won't go through each of these. And also, as Rose mentioned, we do, the state budget has not been enacted, so as we look at what it makes into the final budget, we have the 45 days to make any appropriate revisions per the final enacted budget. And with that, move to adopt the proposed 2022, '23 budget.
Yes, yeah. And with that, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, now we're bringing this back to the board for discussion. Do I have, does anybody have any questions, comments? Please queue up. Board Member Villa?
Hi, I know this is not a complete, we still have, you know, 45 days to revise everything, but I know in our last meeting, I just want to put it out there on record again, that, you know, we're talking about how much money we have and ways to spend it, and I really want to make sure that we go on record and state, I really want this partnership with Wide Open Walls, and I really want all of our schools to not look like prisons anymore, and I want our schools to be fully covered in art, every single school in every district. And I'm going to be loud about that, and I know, I think my board is standing behind that. If we have the funds to do it, I mean, that Tahoe Park Elementary has impacted that community and to such a wide scale. I mean, I get stopped at the grocery store about it. Anytime I see somebody in my neighborhood walking my dog, they will stop and say, this is such a big change. I get emails all the time, what can you do for Earl Warren? What can you do for this school? This is what our community is wanting. This is what I want. So, I know we have time, but I would like to have every school in the next five years. I think that our students and our families and our communities deserve to put some money back into really enriching our campuses and our students as a whole.
Thank you, Board Member Villa. Do we have a response for that, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to differ in case there were other comments. Absolutely, Member Villa, and I'll just take responsibility for that piece. As long as we have access to the one-time funds, our intention was to include some of those one-time expenditures that we discussed at the last board meeting, so that's on me. So, at the 45-day revision piece, you will see some of those one-time expenditures. And again, we will do our best to try to balance a recommendation where it may not be five years, because that's past the expiration of our one-time funds, but we'll try to do as much as we can using one-time funds before they're set to expire as part of our VAPA investment. So it'll be a broader, a broader category around VAPA, where Wide Open Walls would be part of that, of that strategy.
Thank you, Superintendent. And with that, I am glad that you did bring up, that was one of my questions. I heard a lot from my colleagues in terms of what they'd like to see in the, in the budget, including school safety, you know, and the issue that I brought up on mental health, field trips, textbooks, et cetera. So, it's good to hear that those haven't been forgotten, they're just not before us today. So, thank you so much. And with that, you know, this is it, you know, this, we're going to adopt a budget now. We have to take action. It's really not a finished product. I mean, we certainly have a lot more work to do in terms of what's going to end up in the revision of the budget, but that really depends on what is, what is signed at the state level, so, and that is TBD. So, anyway, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Board Member Wu, and seconded by Board Member Murawski, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Okay, roll call.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. And with that, we are moving on to item 10.4.
Good evening again. I'll wait for that PowerPoint to come up. Meanwhile, we're bringing before you for approval, presenting first the AB 1200 disclosure for the proposed salary and health benefit improvements for the non-represented employees. Next slide, please. And these are the items that are for your approval. The first is, for the year 2020, '21 and 2019, '20, non-represented employees will receive a 3% one-time stipend in each of those years. The second one is for '21, '22, non-represented employees will receive a 4% ongoing salary increase. The third is for '21, '22, non-represented employees will receive a one-time payment of $1,250. And the last item is, effective July 1 of 2022, the district shall fully pay the cost of the Kaiser benefit plan rate for eligible employees, and will pay 100% of the premium cost for those dependents, including domestic partners and spouses. Next slide, please. The fiscal impact is a total cost of 5.2 million in salaries and benefits across the three years, including, and these include, the one-time cost of 1.5 million that will be funded with unrestricted general fund dollars. The ongoing cost of 3.7 million will be funded with a combination of general and other funds, and the reason why is because the other funds support the salaries and benefits of other employees that work for those funds, such as cafeteria, adult ed, child development, charter schools. Next slide, please. Oh, and that concludes the presentation. And are there any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Any comments, questions? Please queue up. Okay, so, I guess we have one more agreement to bring salary increases and benefits for an additional group of our employees, and this is aligned with what many of our other employees currently have, including SETA, SEIU, and, you know, UPE. So, this agreement also meets the district goals to, for all employees and their families to have healthcare benefits at 100% of the Kaiser's rates, so that all employees and their families are covered regardless of their position in the district. So I think that's something we should definitely be proud of. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this, this proposed agreement. Moved by Board Member Wu, and seconded by Board Member Murawski, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, roll call.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Vice President Garcia, I just want to thank the board. I know that there's 153 employees that are non-represented that will be very grateful for your action. We have a tradition in Sac City where they sort of are at the end of the process, waiting for negotiations to be finalized with all of our other labor partners, and this one is a bit unique in that it kind of combines a little bit of agreements from different labor partners. So you mentioned the SETA one, and then in the case of others, where we have tried to bring parity around healthcare up to the Kaiser rate, as you mentioned. This has been a longstanding vision of our Board of Education, where we want to send a strong signal to our employees that from the perspective of how much we contribute, there should be parity for all of our employees. And so, I'm sure that there's a lot of very grateful employees this evening as a result of your action, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I just have a quick announcement on item 11.1M. There were some clerical errors on the printed version of the adult education calendar, so corrected copies are in the back of the table and available on the website. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Okay. Second? Oh, okay, oh, sorry. Board Member Villa?
Just because graduations are over for majority of the district, I just wanted to say a final congratulations to, last night it was Charles A. Jones' career and education center graduation, and it was a pleasure to be there. It was wonderful to hear so many people come back to the school and talk about their successes. So I just wanted to say congratulations to them as well.
Great, thank you. Did you want a second? Board Member Wu's motion to adopt the consent agenda? Yes, okay. Student preferential vote?
Yes, on all in session items.
Thank you, roll call.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to 12.0, Business and Financial Information Reports. Information received. Future meetings, we have, our next meeting is August 11th, at 4:30, closed session at 4:30, 6:30 open session. This is one meeting in August, so just keep that in mind, and this is when we'll probably hear back, when we will hear back on some of the revisions for our budget. With that, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to open the special meeting to receive the, well, actually, I think I, first I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board Member Phillips?
Mm-hmm.
Aye? To adjourn, great. And now we're going to open a special meeting to receive the Sunshine materials from Teamsters, and we're going to adjourn into closed session.